Robin Crossen.
Yeah.
Sonia Macy's.
Here.
Liesel Pettis.
Here.
And Heather.
All right, everyone, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a flag in the back and one to my left.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, thanks, everyone. And we need to roll into our liquor license authority meeting, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Sloop, second by Meyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we are now convened as the Liquor Licensing Authority. This is meeting 2021-08. Roll call is the same. Everyone is present. We have two items up tonight for public hearings. First one is request for a new tavern liquor license application. This is an application by Rumor Design and Redesign LLC, DBA RD Home. And please bear with me as I read the hearing procedure into the record. This is a public hearing before the Liquor Licensing Authority of the City of Steamboat Springs to determine whether or not the application of Rumor Design plus Rumor Design LLC, DBA RD Home, to be located at 912 Lincoln Avenue, Steamboat Springs, Colorado, for a tavern liquor license should be granted or denied. This hearing is conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the rules of the Liquor Licensing Authority of the City of Steamboat Springs. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by interested parties in order to enable the city council to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by state law as to whether or not the liquor license applied for should be issued. A record is being made of these proceedings so that those who desire to be heard must identify themselves by name and address. Interested parties are residents of the neighborhood under consideration or owners or managers of any business located in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has been preliminarily established as follows. The relevant neighborhood is the downtown area. Any challenges to members of council conducting this hearing must be stated at the onset of the hearing. The burden is upon the applicant to satisfy the council that the reasonable requirements of the relevant neighborhood for the kind of license applied for are not presently being adequately satisfied. The burden is also upon the applicant to show the council that he or she is a person of good moral character, entitled to hold a liquor license. And is the applicant ready to proceed? All right. Please step forward and identify yourself for the record by giving us your name and address.
Valerie Stafford, and my address is 912 Lincoln Avenue.
Okay.
Springs, Colorado.
Perfect. And please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you're about to give before the council is the truth? All right. And do you wish to make a statement regarding your liquor license application?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. And Julie, does the city have any exhibits to introduce?
Yes, we have exhibits A through G, documents required by the Colorado.
Okay. Is there any objection to the admission of cities exhibits A through G? Anybody here to object on that? Seeing none, cities exhibits A through G will be admitted. And Julie, does the applicant have any exhibits to introduce?
Yes, she submitted a petition containing 45 signatures in support of the application.
Okay. Are there any objections to the admission of applicants exhibit D? Looks like none. So are there any other interested parties who wish to be recognized on this liquor license application? Anybody here to make comment on that? Okay, looks like none. So at this time, council may immediately make a decision, go into executive session for consideration or documents or testimony, or table this matter. Any motion to approve or deny must contain findings and conclusions. The city attorney has prepared an outline of findings to assist in a motion to approve or deny, which is in your agenda packet.
I'll move to approve the request for a new tavern liquor license application by Rumor Design and R Design LLC, doing business as RD Home, subject to final police department approval, fire prevention approval, and city clerk walkthrough.
Second.
Motion by Meyer and a second by Sloop. Any other discussion on that motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. Good luck. Best of luck. All right. Okay. And next up on liquor license agenda, we have a request for a new tavern liquor license application. This is an application by Steamboat Seafood Company, Inc., DBA Steamboat Meat and Seafood Company. And again, bear with me as I read the procedure into the record. This is a public hearing before the Liquor Licensing Authority of the City of Steamboat Springs to determine whether or not the application of Steamboat Seafood Company, Inc., DBA Steamboat Meat and Seafood Company, to be located at 1030 Yampa Avenue, Steamboat Springs, Colorado, for a tavern liquor license should be granted or denied. This hearing is conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the rules of the Liquor Licensing Authority of the City of Steamboat Springs. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by interested parties in order to enable the city council to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by state law as to whether or not the liquor license applied for should be issued. A record is being made of these proceedings so that those who desire to be heard must identify themselves by name and address. Interested parties are residents of the neighborhood under consideration or owners or managers of any business located in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has been preliminarily established as follows. The relevant neighborhood is the downtown area. Any challenges to members of council conducting this hearing must be stated at the onset of the hearing. The burden is upon the applicant to satisfy the council that the reasonable requirements of the relevant neighborhood for the kind of license applied for are not presently being adequately satisfied. The burden is also upon the applicant to show the council that he or she is a person of good moral character, entitled to hold a liquor license. And is the applicant ready to proceed? Yeah, please step forward. If you could identify yourself for the record and give us your name and address.
William Hamill, Bill Hamill, and the address is 1030 Yampa Street. That's our property down there. And been in business for 39 years.
Yep.
And we're moving forward with, our deli's been expanded, our deck has been redone. And we're looking to be able to have somebody enjoy a beverage with their lunch.
All right. And would you please raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give the council is the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. And do you wish to make any other statement regarding your liquor license application?
No, I do not.
Okay. And Julie, does the city have any exhibits to introduce?
Yes, we have exhibits A through G, documents required by the Colorado.
Okay, is there any objection to the admission of cities exhibits A through G? Anybody here to object to those? Seeing none. Cities exhibits A through G will be admitted. And does the applicant have any exhibits to introduce?
Yes, we submitted a petition.
Okay. Are there any objections to the admission of applicants exhibit D? Anybody here to object on that? Looks like nobody. So exhibit D shall be admitted. Are there any other interested parties who wish to be recognized on this liquor license application? Anybody here on this one? Okay, looks like nobody. So at this time, council may immediately make a decision, go into executive session for consideration of documents or testimony, or table this matter. Any motion to approve or deny must contain findings and conclusions. The city attorney has prepared an outline of findings to assist in a motion to approve or deny, which is in your agenda packet.
I'll move to approve the request for a new tavern liquor license application by Steamboat Seafood Co., Inc., doing business as Steamboat Meat and Seafood Company, subject to final police department approval, fire prevention approval, and city clerk walkthrough.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Sloop. Any other discussion on that motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Yep. Best of luck. All right. That concludes our public hearing items for Liquor License Authority, and we need to approve the minutes from Liquor License Meeting from June 1st.
Move to approve.
Motion by Sloop, second by Crossen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And could I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Sloop, second by Meyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. And we are now back onto our city council, our regular agenda. Roll call's still the same. Everyone's here, so let's roll into our council reports. Let's start over here. Liesel, council report for tonight?
Um, just little update. So our DEI subcommittee is trying to nail down times to do a listing tour this summer. We are likely going to do it in partnership with County Commissioner Beth Melton and the Social Justice Coalition. So more on that to come. And then I don't think that Michael and I updated on the housing committee that the chamber put together, but I know that we at least touched base on it during the county and city meeting. But it was very well attended. We had Ski Corps there, the Sheridan County City, the school district, the hospital. I'm sure I'm still missing people. Jason Peaslee, obviously. And everybody just kind of gave a update on what they are working on, which was great. The Housing Authority does have a lot of units coming online, actually fairly quickly. It's not enough, but it was nice to hear how quickly they are working, and that's coming soon. We are already setting a next meeting, I think, to talk more about where are the partnerships, where are the things that we could be doing together? So we'll have more on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Sonia?
Are there minutes to those meetings?
Yeah, Sarah Leonard took minutes.
I mean, if the minutes come back to you guys for approval, and even if they're in draft form, could they be forwarded to Julie and sent to us?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why not.
Anything with housing, if we know about it, meetings, that would be helpful for talking to a member of the community.
Let me see if minutes came out on that, and I can forward it.
Yeah, great.
They're awesome.
Perfect. Thank you. Sonia, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring up an issue that I know we're all aware of, but I'm not sure that we're all engaged with, which is what's going on out at Sleepy Bear. Everybody has heard that there was a pretty significant event, obviously, with the power outage for 15 families of the, without power for 20 days. And, you know, I think we're going to hear some residents describe the situation that they're living with right now, but it's basically an untenable situation for these individuals. And we were presented with some information when this first happened, that there was going to be coordination through Route County Office of Emergency Management. I'm not sure if they have been able to fully engage, given the wildfires and the other pressures on themselves, but I'm a little concerned that I'm hearing from residents and from friends of residents that there is a lack of coordination around certain pieces of this event, and that the residents are not getting information about the timeline for these issues getting resolved. And I'm sure that you read in the paper that there was a complaint filed, and the state is looking into this. So it's kind of a complex situation. And regarding the power, I mean, you know, obviously, the first thing probably everybody thinks is, well, just YVA, get on in there and fix it. But that situation is unsafe for the 15 houses at a minimum, and probably for the remaining houses. And the state electrical inspector is going out there and looking at the entire park. So, you know, just given that, and they've been 20 days without electricity, this is not a quick situation that is being dealt with. And we have a lot of people in this community who probably don't even know, and are just going about their daily business as if this is not happening here. And I kind of feel like, you know, we might need to help figure out how to marshal resources and how to get information about what is needed to our community, because when we ask for people to help, they tend to plug in. And, you know, whether that's as simple as helping somebody get a website out to show the residents, you know, where can they go take a shower? Having somebody pass out those flyers in homes. I feel like there's a lot that could be happening to help a group of residents who are kind of loosely coordinated among themselves. And I don't know what role we're playing, if any, but I don't think it's enough. And my concerns go beyond just what's happening right now. I'm really concerned about the future of that residence. And, you know, I don't know about our water team and how engaged anybody has been with the issues related to water, but if the infrastructure of the electrical is as old as it is, and is problematic, practically guaranteed that the water infrastructure is going to be the same. So, you know, I think about what's happening to those families right now, but what happens if the state inspectors find that that place is unlivable because of the infrastructure or other reasons? So I just wanted to bring it up and see if there's any way, do we have anybody, whether it's a city person or whether it's a group of our council members, to kind of pull together some of the entities that probably have a piece of the answer, but nobody has all of the answer? Like, the Housing Authority could help with some things. United Way, is this happening? Or am I just out of it? Or does anybody know what we are doing in the coordination role? And if we're not doing something, can we do something?
Yeah.
Sonia, we are expecting public comment tonight on the Sleepy Bear incident. I was going to mention it in my manager's report. I don't think I need to mention it now, since you already have. Thank you. But we do have professionals in the audience that have details and different perspectives. And it's council's meeting, but we could bring them up after public comment and have a brief discussion on that and provide updates to council and the answers that we do have and some of the dilemmas that are being faced. So it might help inform. And I like your idea of marshaling resources. Yeah, I think this is kind of under the radar.
Tom gave a great email, because I had asked about what's going on as well. And so it'd be great to hear from Tom for everybody and anybody who's listening. So I think that'd be a great idea, Gary.
Sounds good with that?
I'd like to get it. Yeah, I think it would be great, because I think if we can at least get information into our minutes, then that could be passed along to residents. And, you know, we can start to help them get the information that they're not getting.
Well, why don't we get to public comment once we get to that point? And then we can have some of the experts here in the audience help share some of that perspective on what's happening and what we can do to help.
Right. And Tom would be a great point person, because this happened while I was on vacation, of course. And so Tom Leeson took lead on this from the city's perspective. So he'd be good to lead that discussion and bring in anybody else that has information they can provide.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, report from you?
Yeah, just one item. I attended a UREC meeting last Thursday, and I think the only, the main item, which was not the roundabout and the fact that the streets, there's no roundabout. There's just two pathways that are gravel, but at least they've opened, was the second project that they were slated to do this year was a sidewalk project up at the base area. And the contractor, Duckles, has informed the city that there's a lack of available materials, especially concrete and rebar. And they are proposing to delay it till the spring. And that is the recommendation of the UREC committee. Duckles will hold their price. So, and you'll remember that Duckles is also scheduled next spring to, or next summer, to replace the medians. So we will still have a busy summer next year, construction-wise. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Heather?
I have nothing.
Okay. Robin?
Well, just a few things. But first, I think I'd like to thank everybody that was involved, between the city staff and the chamber and everybody else for pulling off a parade with 12 hours' notice and making that work. So thanks to everybody for helping with that. We've had, from what I can hear, some really good positive comment about putting it on, thank you, putting it on Yampa Street. So more to come on that, I'm sure, as we filter through all the pros and cons of that. House and Hill and ICE meetings were canceled because there was no new information. And in conjunction with the parade, I'd like to thank all the residents of our community for not having fireworks this year. It was very quiet, but it was very important. So thank you all for being responsible citizens in the community. There are handicapped parking spaces, as we continue to have problems with parking. And I don't know who could look into this, but there are parking spaces outside the Health and Human Services Building on Sixth Street. There are two of them. And right now, they are empty all the time, because the building's been vacated. And even if temporarily, could we find out whether we would have the ability to turn them into regular parking spaces for the rest of the summer? I saw that. And then I've spoken to Dan and Gary. The ordinance for the restaurants to be able to continue to take parking spaces on Lincoln and Side Streets and even Yampa, is there an opportunity for us to look at that as a council, to see whether we might be interested in revoking that piece of the resolution? Everybody's at 100%. Everybody's back on an even playing field. And I appreciate, Gary, you have said multiple times to us that we're trying to get the folks to be able to make up their business. The parking spaces are important, and we get comments every Saturday at Farmer's Market about the lack of parking. So I just didn't know whether there might be any people on any other council members that would be interested in having Dan talk to us about that or figure something out.
Wait, which one? The parking or the alcohol?
The parking. Just the parking piece, not the alcohol. Just the parking piece.
Parking in the street.
In the street. Whether it's a lack of parking. You know, it's a metal fence, it's a barrel, it's a whatever, it's chain link fence, but they're starting to pop up more. And we've been told about some safety concerns on some of the locations, on corners and such, with people tripping all the time. So I'm just wondering whether there is a, or of us that would like to have that come back to us and get more information. I'm with you. I'm with you.
Yeah, more information never hurts.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Tomorrow morning, if anybody's up at 6:50 a.m., you're more than welcome to get on the Yamp Valley Regional Airport Commission call to the Craig Chamber. And we will be doing a presentation to the Craig Chamber at 6:50 tomorrow morning. CML, we had a full day of training back on Friday, this 18th, which was, you know, really, for most of us, reiterating what we already know, but it was a great refresher. And then, of course, everybody knows about the county meeting that we had last week. And I'd like to let the citizens in the community understand that the comments that were made about Haymaker and the Steamboat Springs Airport were not comments that were made at the actual meeting. They were either made before or after. But the way the article read, it kind of seemed to think like, like we sat there and listened to those comments being made, and that was not true, although they were made. They weren't made as part of the meeting for us to have respond to. So.
I think they were also made in slight jest.
They were.
Which, you can't really get that jestful tone when you read it in the paper, can you?
No, not at all. So that's it.
Thanks, Robin. Michael?
Yeah, no, Tim was, I think, it was something that happened. No, I like my golf course very much.
A lot of people.
And when it comes to housing, yeah, so when it comes to housing, there are other options out there. And like Liesel said, we have a great team. I got to tell you, Cara Stoller and the chamber has done a fantastic job correlating everybody together that has any interested party. And so it was the first round. We have another one coming up later this, next week. Yeah. And it's kind of just stepping up forward, but it really was where we all got together and talked about, talk about, you know, because we've talked about it with our own little housing committee. And instead of everyone doing something, we all want to do something together. And from that, I think that we're moving pretty fast with some housing issues and some things. So the conversation's risen right to the top, and I think people know that that's a big issue, and I think we're going to find some solutions. I got to tell you guys, with the Yamp Valley Housing Authority success, the one mil tax that went a few years ago, and what we can, imagine if we didn't, as a community, vote for that? Where would we be right now without having tangible properties that rental we can have? I mean, it may not be for sale, but it's definitely something that has been paramount to our community. And so I just want the community to know that Yamp Valley Housing Authority is doing great. And I think that they're kind of helping lead the way for all of these different organizations, whether it's Ski Corps or the city or others, to really look at that Yamp Valley Housing Authority and as a guide to like, what's the next step? And the main reason is that they've created the tangible. They've got something that they can show success-wise. Yep, the UREC went through. I drove on that road July 1st, when we had our UREC meeting, and I praised everybody, because by the time we had a meeting, I'd already used the gravel roundabout trail twice. And so, yes, it was definitely good, and I'm on that. This next week for me is really heavy, so right now I'm pretty much good to go. Oh, it was my first weekend at the Farmer's Market. And yes, that was quite fun, and we took some good comments and notes. And I think we'll bring up the median sometime later today.
Thanks. Thanks for giving those notes to us, by the way. I forwarded them on to the county commissioners, because every week we're hearing about how much people want to see that core trail go west.
Yes.
And I also invited them to use our signup genius to join us at the Farmer's Market. Actually, Angelica did it.
Right. And actually, a side note to that, every single person that came up to us, we asked them to contact their county commissioners on all of the issues, whether it be housing or the core trail.
Here's their card.
You're hearing it from us. We're hearing it from you, but they have not heard it from you, and you live in the county. So we were pretty adamant with people to, and some wanted to know when public comment was, who did they have to write into, and all that kind of stuff. So that was all very positive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I encourage you guys. I mean, it is, it's going to be a lot of fun. I mean, that's, you know, Scott Ford was there. And I think one thing that we talked about as a council is when he did Coffee with Council, it was his way to truly engage, but it was kind of a small piece. This is really getting out there. One of the Craig City Council members came out and just, you know, a lot of people compliment on how we're, you know, they can come right up to us and talk to us. And I think that as long as we, as a team of citizens, can talk to our city council people and have that much availability about anything that they want to talk about. I mean, it's just that the Farmer's Market is going to be key from here until, I think, October. So if you have any concerns, and you're not watching the show, you're not doing everything, come down to the Farmer's Market and tell us your positive thoughts.
Is this the show? Is that what you're talking about?
This is the show. Yes. Yes. Anyway, I'm good.
Okay. Okay. All right. So for me, yeah, I participated in the council booth on June 26th, the week before. It was great. A lot of good comments, a lot of similar comments to the ones that you received. In June, I also participated in the Economic Development Council's school updates from three different school districts in the community. And it was really good to hear about what's going on there, their new facilities, and exciting times for them. And I also wanted to just reiterate Robin's point on the parade. It was really great work by city staff and the chamber to coordinate that and make the change with the closure on I-70. And I know it was, it was hard to do that so quickly, but really appreciated everyone's efforts. And I thought it went off really well. Thought it was very well done and really enjoyed it. And got to be a parade judge with Liesel and Jeff. That was fun. So it was fun. Yeah. So that's my report. So let's take a quick look at agenda review. I'm not going to ask Julie to bring up the agendas, but they're in your packet. Did anybody have any questions? We're pretty, we're booked solid on the July meetings, and then August 17th, we have our one housing discussion, or short-term rental, sorry, discussion there. And then 24th of August, we're still a little bit open there, but I'm sure that we'll have some items fill up. But any questions on any of those current agendas right now?
No, I just, I think it's important for the community to understand that we get a few meetings off the beginning of July, or beginning of August. And when we do the work session on vacation home rentals in July, and then it doesn't come back to us to August 17th, it's simply because there's not, you know, we're not doing it on the 20th. We're going to gather information, and then we're going to come back. So I don't want anybody to think that we're just putting it aside, but it's going to be like a month in between the two meetings.
Yep.
I see it on the 20th. Do I have an old packet?
No, we have multiple times where we're talking about it.
I'm sorry, it is there again. I apologize.
No worries, but I don't want to confuse, because somebody reached out to me to ask me, like, what was the sequence? So I think it's the.
It's all three.
We have it on all three.
All three.
13th and the 20th this month, and then the 17th of August.
Okay, that's okay.
Jason?
Sorry.
If they're on the, meeting on the 20th that we have on that agenda for the VHR discussion, is there an avenue for us, if we wanted to lift the moratorium in some of the areas going forward? Just to kind of, I mean, there's kind of some discussion going of what areas we know we're going to keep, and.
So the six-month moratorium first reading is on the 20th.
Oh.
That would be the night to talk about it.
Right.
Right.
I'm just saying, do we need some information to say, what else do we want to do and limit these areas or whatever?
That's, that's what is, I mean, that's the night to talk about it.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
Right. Okay. Anything else on agendas? All right. Gary, I'll turn it over to you for city manager's report.
Thanks, President Leece. I'm going to cover a few announcements on hot topics first, most of which you've all mentioned this evening. And just starting off to echo the thanks to the chamber and the city staff and the parade organizers. We made that call at 5:00 a.m. on Parade Day. And then to complicate things, at 4:41 a.m., CDOT opens one lane of I-70. And it's like, oh, are they going to open the other lane in the next 20 minutes? Well, no, they didn't. So we just had to make the call. Everybody jumped to, into action, and we really appreciate everybody's nimbleness and flexibility to make that happen. I think it was a great success, great venue as well. And then also, just a thanks to the community. I didn't know what to expect. Last year, fireworks started two weeks before the 4th of July.
Yeah.
It was pretty quiet that night, though. I heard a couple go off, but I really appreciate the community respecting the wishes of the community leaders in the fire department to play it safe that night. So thank you. Did want to mention short-term rentals and the Engage Steamboat website. We have discussions coming up. It's an important topic. There's a lot of people to weigh in. Check out the Engage Steamboat webpage. Go to steamboatsprings.net. Right in the middle at the bottom, there's an Engage button. Just push that. And then there's a big square box. It's really easy to navigate that talks about short-term rentals. There's a plethora of information in there. There's comment forms, minutes of previous meetings. So there's all kinds of information, and we'd love to hear from residents and stakeholders prior to these public discussions and throughout the public discussions. So check out the Engage Steamboat site at steamboatsprings.net. I was going to mention the restaurant parking. We've, I've heard several complaints about restaurant parking and taken up a few parking places, a couple of restaurants that, a few restaurants in town that are still using their sidewalk seating, some concerns about ADA access and clogging the sidewalk. I've talked to Rebecca about that, and I understand now that she'll, I think it's best Rebecca just bring a report to council, and we can give you an update at our next meeting. Because I do think that will require policy, probably some policy adjustment from city council. Medians. Wanted to talk about medians. I want to tell a short story about the medians, because as much as we've tried to get the word out, there's still a lot of information that isn't out there. So point number one, the turf medians from Old Fish Creek to McDonald's, Old Fish Creek Road to McDonald's, they were planned for replacement this summer. So we turned off the irrigation. We were going to replace them this summer. There's going to. We were going to replace them this summer. There's going to, they're, well, starting today, CDOT's starting with their major construction project on Highway 40. So we decided and asked if we, I asked the contractor if we could hold their price through 2022. So we postponed that project till summer of next year just to try and minimize the chaos on Highway 40. Reminding you that when we service the medians, we do a lane closure on both sides. So it does create more of a bottleneck. We had concerns about additional impact to traffic, and so we pushed it to 2022. Point number two, Parks and Recreation, which maintains these mediums, we have priorities, just like snow plowing priorities, which streets we do first and which cul-de-sacs we get to last. We maintain our contractual obligations, our sports complexes, our revenue generating sites, our parks, city facilities. Medians, medians are, are pretty much the last priority to maintain when we do this other stuff. We've also heard concerns about our sports fields and parks and facilities as well, in addition to the median. So point number three, park staff is severely understaffed. I've mentioned that publicly. We've got about a third of our seasonal staff employed. And that's it. So they're stretched very thin with these other contractual obligations and other facilities that they're maintaining as higher priority. Point number four, we, I directed staff, go out and find somebody to cut the medians, to mow the medians. We've contacted 25 companies in three counties. We've got 10 denials and 15 no responses. So either phone calls, emails, trying to get somebody to do this. I've heard comments from the community, get volunteers to do it, send the kids out there to do it. It's just too dangerous. I want contractors that are licensed and insured to be out there to do this or city employees to do this. It's just too dangerous out there on the highway. They're very steep. They have, they are now bordering on violating CDOT standards because of their height and sight distance and everything else. They need to be replaced. So we plan on replacing them next year. And we've even contacted temp agencies. So if you can imagine with the labor shortage, even temp agencies are, are struggling. The last option is we could do this in-house. We could reprioritize if council wishes to do this. If there's enough public outcry, we could just pull staff off of other projects, put them out there in the medians, close one lane of the highway and get them mowed down. If it's that big of a concern, I'm willing to do that. But I'd like to hear from council if that's your preference. So that's the story on the medians. I think a lot of folks just think it's derelict duties. There were derelict duties by the city. No, we have these planned. It costs us over $100,000 annually. When we were cutting budgets last year, that was one of the budget cuts because we knew we were replacing them this year. So that's the median story. Any questions, comments on that? I don't want to get into a big discussion, but what, do you want us to do this in-house or keep us looking? I just told staff, keep looking, pay the price. I'll come back and let you know what the price is, but it could be very high. Heather?
Yes.
This would be a question for Corey, possibly mostly for Garrett, but is there a way that we could, I know in the past, sheriff's office has had inmates do work. Is there a way that we could do that? No, it's a big no.
No, and honestly, I think it's a priority that we should pull someone off something and they're going to need to do it once and that's it. It's lasted this long. It's all dead. We cut it down. The weeds disappear. People stop complaining. We're not talking like we're doing it every two, three weeks like we didn't. And I, I think we should find some way to prioritize it with in-house staff and get it done.
Well, I, are we allowed to have a discussion on this or we?
Sure. I'm just looking for four.
Well, I don't, I agree that we should, we should have taken care of this early season, but at this point of the season, I, the fact that we have only one third of the seasonal employees that we need, and we're having complaints about other facilities, their revenue generating. I think we need to keep taking care of the facilities that we have people using on a daily basis. I know it's ugly. I look at it every day of the week and I wish I could pull over and pull them just like everybody else. It's too dangerous.
Okay. Other thoughts on the medians? Kathy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think if we, like Michael said, we whacked the weeds once with the lack of rain, we're not going to see a lot of growth. But the, I, I think if we take staff one time, it's, it's a limited thing. And I think it's, it's kind of, it's, to me, it's like when we cut the bus service or the previous council cut the bus service and we, we made all the right reasons, but the, but the impact was huge. So Gary, I would be with, with Michael and let's just do one, a one time. I don't know if anybody else is.
Who else? Thoughts?
This is a priority. I know it's.
The people are coming, whether there's weeds in the median or not.
I wish people cared as much about affordable housing as they do.
For the $100,000, it would take us to get them where they need to be for the rest of the season. That money could go into, jumpstart something.
Let's let the staff handle this.
So maybe we keep looking, Gary. Why don't you keep looking to see if you can find that private contractor?
I'm going to keep looking the rest of the week. If we can't do it, we'll just re-prioritize staff and get it done. Okay.
Why?
All right.
Reprioritize.
No, you didn't hear that from us.
You did not get that memo. You didn't hear that from all, from.
Did you get that memo?
You're okay if we let them go the rest of the year?
Yes, yes.
I have a problem if you want to see if we can find a landscaper to do it.
Yeah, I'd like to still try to find somebody privately to do it.
If we strike out, I'll let you know. Okay, thank you.
But not staff.
That's awesome.
Thanks. That's helpful.
Hey, extra.
All right. The sleepy bear incident, yes, I already said what I needed to say on that. So we'll wait for public comment on that. There is, back to the city manager report, there are council, there's an update on council goals provided as attachment one. Executive search for chief of police. We interviewed firms last week. We selected public sector search and consultants to conduct the search. They had the most robust proposal and very qualified staff to do it with a significant public outreach component, which was what we were looking for. So we'll be getting that underway as soon as we get them under contract. Do want to give kudos to Kathy Meyer, who's now the president of the Colorado Municipal League. Yes.
Nice.
And they'll be hosting their annual retreat right here in Steamboat Springs. So we get to show off our town to 21 other elected and appointed officials from around the state this Friday. From the departments, you'll see updates from the deputy city manager on communications, everything that's in there. I'm not going to get into the highlights. I'm going to kind of whip through this. Facilities gives you a number of bullet points on things that they are working on. Intergovernmental services and grants, everything in there, especially all of our sustainability actions, the climate action plan, the regional solar projects, the electric vehicle readiness plan, stimulus funds, a lot of discussion happening around those. I really appreciate their efforts to stay on top of all these grant funding opportunities. There's a lot of money out there that we are tracking and, and strategizing to take best advantage of. IT gives an update on what they've been working on. Finance is giving us an update on budget as we get right into budget season, staring us right in the face. And a new budget software that we're implementing that should expedite the budget process and make it simpler for everyone, we're hoping. Accounting gives an update on express bill pay and several other bullet points, utilities, tax and utility updates, procurement and contracting, talks about the bids and RFPs that are open and closed. Fire department, our venerable fire EMS department has call numbers in there, notable events, calls that they responded to, updates on fire prevention, operations, training, public events, and of course, all their typical data and pie charts and everything else that they put in there. If you're interested, it's always interesting reading. Take a look at it. That's my report and appreciate you listening.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions or feedback for Gary? Yeah, go ahead, ladies.
I just have one, Gary, on what the cards are. You have some, finance has some things, accounting has something on working with the city managers department to offering purchasing cards to city council. I'm not, I don't understand this. What is that?
Yeah, P cards are, well, maybe I could have Kim describe that. They're pretty much just debit cards to one of our accounts and providing that to city council members, basically to create more efficiencies. So you're not having to go out and book reservations and then run them through all of our departments and so forth. So you'd basically each have, each have one of your own debit cards to with, with all the limits and constraints and rules and everything else to follow. Kim?
Don't leave, Kim. Don't leave.
Don't leave.
In that same area, the new, under accounting, the new recreational tube fee, I know we've basically closed the river at this point. How long will it take before we have a general feel for what that generated this spring?
Kim Weber, finance director. So those are for June, it's due July 15.
Okay.
And so right now we have $650 in there, but that'll balloon up as soon as, as soon as we receive those for June and July.
Okay. And then I don't know whether this is really more for you or for possibly Winnie under IGS, I guess. Two marketing, two A marketing, Ralph County Riders is coordinating the Trail Ambassador Program, which is fantastic. Further to a marketing effort and implementing a trail marketing effort. And I'm wondering with the two A marketing funds. And I'm wondering what that actually is, since we're hearing so much in the community about, let's stop the marketing of our community.
So the Winnie Delaquadri Special Projects and IGS manager, the two A ballot initiative included not only the money for the two-way trails, but also $30,000 a year to market the amenities created by the accommodations tax. And so the way we have broken that out is we do $7,000 to Ralph County Riders for the Trail Ambassadors Program, not just bike ambassadors, but all ambassadors. And then the other 23,000 goes to the Chamber and they have really, it used to go to Bike Town, now it goes to Chamber. And it's, a lot of it is to make sure that there's good up-to-date information on the trails, on their website. There is some social marketing, social media marketing that they do, but they focus that in the spring and the fall.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Feedback for Gary? Nothing else? Thank you, counsel. All right. All right. That brings us to our general public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Public comment will be provided after staff reports are at 6:00 PM, whichever comes first. City council will make no decision nor take action except to direct the city manager. Those addressing city council are requested to identify themselves by name and address, and all comments shall not exceed three minutes. Anyone's here for general public comment for items not on tonight's agenda, please step forward. Give us your name and address. Hey, Norma. So I understand, Norma, you have an interpreter with us tonight? Okay. So I told Norma, she, and she contacted me ahead of time and said she would have an interpreter. So I'm going to give her a little leeway to have a little extra time so we can have her interpreter help provide some Spanish interpretation for her. So yeah. Absolutely.
I'm Norma Ruth Ryan. I live in the Sleepy Bear Trailer Park at 3725 Lincoln Avenue, Unit 22. I have not had power or gas for 20 days. I do not speak for my neighbors on the crisis at Sleepy Bear. However, I've brought somebody, Jeanette, from Integrated Community to translate this public comment in Spanish so that maybe my Spanish-speaking neighbors at Sleepy Bear and beyond can feel more comfortable talking about this and other issues with you all, knowing that interpretation is available. This should be the standard for anything council acts on that impacts Spanish-speaking communities, which is to say everything. My electric toothbrush gave out on me about three days in. I'm not telling the United Way about this, but I will tell you because it's something so easy and real and somehow intrinsic to a lifestyle that I pay for. It's a very small part of my needs that are not being met. I work at a brewery full-time. I get beer on me constantly. We all know that smell of beer in your clothes and on your skin. I can't shower that away when I get home because I can't take a shower in my own house. I can't wash my clothes there either. Cooking meals? Forget it. I don't have an oven or a cooktop or hot water to wash dishes. I eat takeout when I can afford it. Sometimes I just eat beef jerky for breakfast and maybe for dinner. I frequently skip meals. There are neighbors that are listening online who often do the same. I removed my immediate perishables from my fridge, but left stuff in there thinking this would be over soon. It's been 20 days. I've been working my full-time job and paying bills and calling people who can maybe possibly tell me what the heck is going on and when we can get power back and filling coolers with ice and using my own money I have stashed in a shoebox to get things that my neighbors and I need, like lights and batteries and water and prepared food. And I'm arranging donations and gift cards and cash via cold calls to restaurants, please on Facebook Marketplace and from my friends. I'm distracted. I have to clean my fridge soon. It's going to be horrific. We've received generous donations from a few different individuals and restaurants and organizations in town, and these godsons brighten our day. One day at a time, but no one, not us and not me and not an individual donor and not a restaurant can afford to provide support for us like this all day, every day, for the past weeks, for more weeks, and maybe months ahead. We know this. So we cut corners and meals and expectations. We have to. Thank you.
Thanks, Norma.
Hola, soy Norma Ruth Ryan y vivo en el parque de casas móviles Sleepy Bear en el 3725 de la avenida Lincoln, en la unidad 22. Hace 20 días que no tengo electricidad ni gas. No hablo en nombre de mis vecinos sobre el asunto del City Bear. Sin embargo, he traído a alguien de la comunidad integrada para traducir este comentario público en español para que mis vecinos de habla hispana en Sleepy Bear y más allá puedan sentirse más cómodos hablando de este y otros temas que con todos ustedes. Sabiendo que la interpretación está disponible. Esta debería de ser la norma para todo lo que el aumento actúe aunque afecte las comunidades de habla hispana, es decir, todo. Mi cepillo de dientes eléctrico se ha estropeado a los tres días. No se lo voy a contar a United Way, pero sí se lo diré. Porque es algo tan fácil y real de alguna manera intrínseco en aquel estilo de vida que pago yo. Es una parte muy pequeña de mis necesidades que no están cubiertas. Trabajo en una cervecería a tiempo completo. Me cae cerveza encima constantemente. Todos conocemos ese olor a cerveza en la ropa. No puedo quitármelo con una ducha cuando llego a casa porque no puedo ducharme ni en mi propia casa. Tampoco puedo lavar mi ropa allí. Cocinando comidas, olvídalos. No tengo horno, ni cocina, ni agua caliente para lavar los platos. Como comida para llevar cuando no lo puedo permitir, a veces solo como cecina para desayunar y quizás para cenar. Con frecuencia me salto las comidas. Hay vecinos en esta audiencia y escuchando en línea que hacen lo mismo. Quité los productos perdedores inmediatos de mi nevera, pero dejé cosas allí pensando que esto cabería pronto. Han pasado 20 días. He estado trabajando a tiempo completo y pagando facturas y llamando a gente que quizás pueda decirme qué demonios está pasando y cuándo podremos recuperar la electricidad y llenando neveras con hielo y utilizando mi propio dinero que he guardado en una caja de zapatos para conseguir cosas que yo y mis vecinos necesitamos, como luces y baterías y agua y comida preparada y organizando donaciones y buena voluntad y dinero en efectivo a través de llamadas frías a restaurantes, peticiones en el mercado de Facebook y de amigos. Estoy distraída. Tengo que limpiar mi nueva, mi nevera pronto. Va a ser horrible y no estoy preparada. Hemos recibido generosas donaciones de diferentes personas, restaurantes y organizaciones de la ciudad. Estos regalos no nos alegran, no nos alegran el día, un día tras otro, pero nadie, ni nosotros, ni yo, ni un donante individual, ni un restaurante puede permitirse el lujo de apoyarnos así todo el día, todos los días, durante semanas y quizás meses. Lo sabemos, así que recortamos las esquinas, las comidas y las expectativas. Tenemos que hacerlo.
Right. Thank you both. And as we mentioned earlier, Gary and a couple of other people will make some comments on your situation after public comment is completed. So thank you. Is anybody else here for general public comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Anybody else here in the audience for that? Nobody else?
I am Joe Kabooty. Lived here for a while, run a t-shirt, jumped downtown, been here a long time. I have a question. Tonight, are you going to vote on the 2% tax?
Yeah, Joe, it's, it's at the end of our agenda. It's near the end.
I have to be with my family. Is it possible for me to say something about that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
So I think the 2% tax would be a terrible thing for us to put on the residents of the, of the town. The property tax just went up. It's going to go up again. It might go up again. My housekeeper cleans other houses and she has a 10-bedroom house that she cleans for somebody who has a second home here. Takes two people all day to do that. As more people move into town, there's going to be more demand for housekeeping, for landscaping, for. for landscaping, for plowing and things like that. And if you put taxes on people that are middle income or low income, it's going to be very difficult for them to stay here. At this point, you can walk town. You can look in the paper. You can go online. Everybody needs people to work in this. No people to work. And if you make it more difficult for that class, they can leave town, and we are going to be even in worse shape than we've ever been. And we pride ourselves on being a community that is friendly and is able to take care of people. And that's not happening. I mean, the store next to me is open about three days a week because they can't get people to work. I went to Yampa Valley Kitchen. They had seven empty tables. They had, can't take you for 20 minutes. The kitchen's got to catch up. So you put more taxes on this class, and more people are going to leave town. And it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be, it's not going to be the same town. There's not going to be the same level of whatever we do that people like. So I don't think that, I don't think it's a good idea to put a 2% tax on anybody. There's probably other ways that you can do things for housing hill. I'm sure you can find some ways. You could find it with the biking fund. You can find it with the Chamber Fund. I mean, we don't need to advertise in the summer for one second. It's so busy. So you can probably find some ways to do stuff for housing hill. Anyway, you get what I'm saying. So I appreciate if you, you know, if you wouldn't put in all the ballot.
Okay, thank you, Joe. And I see on Zoom, Kara, are you there for some public comment?
I am, thank you. Kara Stoller with the Steamboat Springs Chamber. I know there was already a few comments, but I just wanted to reiterate my gratitude to the city team for answering late night Saturday, Saturday night calls and being very willing to be flexible and supportive to continue the parade. I know there's some, it's really a valued tradition. And I'm just really happy that we were able to continue to do it. And we wouldn't have been able to do it if we didn't have the support of the city team. So thank you, Gary and Corey Christensen, Derry Stabile, Chuck Sarasoli, and so Tom Martindale, so many more. We just really appreciate it. So thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else on Zoom for any general public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda? Anybody else here for that? Okay, looks like none. And nobody else in here for general public comment? So I will close general public comment. And Gary? Oh. Oh, sure, come on up, Allison.
I think I've met all of you in person already, but I just wanted to say a quick hello. I'm Allison with the paper. It's been lovely getting to know all of you and seeing your faces every Tuesday. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thanks, Allison. Good to see you. All right, so Gary, with that, maybe you or Tom could give us a little bit of feedback on the Sleepy Bear situation, and we could maybe give some direction after that.
Tom Leeson will come down and give a brief summary. And then there are other folks available that could provide more specifics and answers to questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, City Council. Tom Leeson, Deputy City Manager. And I want to, first off, by thanking Norma particularly. She has been a great resource, sort of on the ground, boots on the ground resource in Sleepy Bear. We've used her to gain information on what's happening. She's been very forthright and has a lot of courage to come and speak, to speak with us, speak with others. So I want to, first of all, thank her for that. Secondly, I want to state that I have been communicating with you about the Sleepy Bear incident, but there's really a whole team of both city and county folks that have been working on this, and many of them are here tonight. Todd Carr with Chief Building Official is here. Chuck Sarasoli is here. Jennifer Bach is here, all to answer questions. It is a complicated situation, and there's sort of different facets of it, which is why there are multiple departments. The city and the county have been working hard to help the residents, particularly at first when it happened. We did, Councilmember Macy's utilized Mo Demora with the Office of Emergency Management. He put together the team, basically, to assess what was going on, particularly when it was immediately shut down. It was kind of uncertain what was happening. We utilized the county human resources. They were able to provide some housing, some food vouchers for the residents, and some temporary housing. Many of the residents have either, or some of the residents have found temporary housing, at least in the beginning. Some have left town for a short period of time for vacations, and many of them have been sticking it out, unfortunately. I think most of you are aware of kind of what happened and why the situation occurred. It was essentially an excavating accident with one of the main electrical lines at Sleepy Bear that affected 15 of the units that are primarily along the river. They needed to do a fire inspection. And my understanding is that inspection process, the fire inspection process, has been completed. But there's still significant damage to the 15 distribution lines from the main line that goes into each of the units. And there's potential damage to the individual meters on the units themselves. So it's kind of a two-phase process. They have determined that the entire service line needs to be replaced, and all the service line to the 15 units needs to be completely replaced. So they need to put in a new service line. That whole service has been submitted and inspected by Todd Carr and his team and approved. And now it's really a matter of going through the construction process and installing those lines. Once that's installed, there can be an inspection process of the main line. And there needs to be an inspection by the property owners of each individual units. And that has been a bit of an issue, is to find an electrical engineer that can do those inspections. Technically speaking, all of them are responsible for their individual inspections. But we are trying to help the homeowners find one electrical inspector that can do all 15, submit the permits and get it approved through Todd Carr's office. I'm not sure of the status of that. The last I heard, they were having a hard time finding electrical engineers to do those individual inspections. But those really can't be completed until the main electrical line has been excavated. They had started that process last week, Native Excavating. And unfortunately, Native Excavating's insurance company said, halt. You probably need to stop this for a lot of reasons that I don't necessarily need to go into tonight because it's complicated. My understanding was that the insurance companies, there are several of them, as you can imagine, were all meeting today onsite to make sure everybody understood what was going on and to coordinate just sort of communication. And then once that meeting was complete, if everybody was satisfied, then that excavation could commence and get that service line in. I don't know the timing of that. Todd may be able to answer that a little bit better in terms of how long that excavation process could take. And we have not heard of the results of that meeting today. We tried to reach out to them, but we did not hear kind of what the results of that meeting was today. So we are happy to do more and coordinate what we can. Unfortunately, the line is all on private property. The Yampa Valley Electric Line comes to a transformer, and then basically from that point on, it's all private. And so there's not any sort of city utilities that we can get in there and work on. And we need to let the inspection process and the insurance companies kind of follow their process before they'll really be allowed to commence any kind of construction. So I'm happy to answer any questions. There are others here that can answer questions. And again, we feel horrible for the residents. We know they're going through some tough times, and we'll be happy to do what we can in our capacity to help them, so.
Okay. Chuck, did you have something you wanted to add? Or were you just up here for questions?
No, I didn't want to add it because I do have an update. We, I just heard that digging is going to commence at 8:00 AM tomorrow morning and to start putting in that main line. They did meet. They all signed off on starting to move dirt, so.
Okay. Thank you. Todd, I see you're here. Did you have anything you wanted to add or just here for questions? Yeah, please, go ahead.
Todd Carr, Building Official. First, again, I'd like to thank Norma and all the residents, all 15 of the homes down there that have been without power, marking three weeks tomorrow. That's a long stretch for families, kids. So my heart goes out to them. They've been troopers to work with. Great little community down there. People really pull together. They have a lot of grit, so they've been through a lot the last three weeks, and I feel for them. So the permit was issued last Tuesday at about 7:30 AM. Work did start, but again, as Tom mentioned, was halted by the insurance company. So it's good news that they're going to start the trenching tomorrow. As far as the timeframe, I think originally they thought somewhere between a week, best case scenario, to two weeks, worst case scenario. And that was with all pedestals and meters being available and onsite. So I know there was a small delay, and they had to swap out some parts. As you know, that's a difficult business to be in right now, ordering anything with construction materials. But Central Electric, I believe, was able to obtain everything they need to get the main power on. So now, let's look at phase three, right? We have the residents that need to hire an electrical contractor to come in and do basically a joint inspection with the building department. So we're willing to give our electrical inspector up as often as needed throughout Monday through Friday, even a Saturday. That's fine with me. We'll pay them overtime to get the work done. So we'd like to go through with each, the contractor in each home to identify problems that may have presented themselves when we had this surge of electricity, right? So we've had two homes that have started on fire. We don't know what type of damage could have been done to the other 13 homes because of that high voltage and current that was going through these wires. So we need to look at that. We need to look at any other unsafe, maybe improperly grounded, bonded issues in the mobile homes. So it'd be great to get this report that just concluded today. That'll help me understand what other possible damage might have been done and my electrical inspector, Tom, as well. So we could look at that report and maybe potentially lessen the scope of work, right? But I need to read that first to figure that out. So that phase three part is going to be a struggle for some of these residents. I'm just being honest with you. We're busy right now. We got a great community, though, just like the electrical engineer that stepped up over a weekend to get this design done, right? So we need that support from our local contractors, people that are willing to work with these people, work with the county, and get the inspections done and any improvements done to these homes. But I think to date, I've only, had been contacted by about four of the 13 homes. So let's remember, we have 13. We're trying to get power on right away. The other two fire incidents will come later because there's other separate investigations and insurance claims going on there. So yeah, any support we could get there and finding contractors would be a benefit to these folks, without a doubt.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Todd.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. One more thing, Tom?
Yep, one more thing. I just would like to add that I want to thank Todd and the county. They've waived the fees for the individual property owners. That'll help a lot. We've also been in contact with the Division of Local Affairs because they may have some funding to help some of these property owners make some upgrades, which will probably be necessary on these. So we've been in contact with them. We've also been in contact with DOLA about the Mobile Home Act. And I know that they've been in contact with the owner because the state actually has more regulatory authority than we do in terms of the Mobile Home Act, which was adopted by the state a couple of years ago. So, and Jennifer Bach is here to answer questions about that, if there are any, so.
Okay. Council, any questions for Tom or the group? Sonya, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So installing the electrical at those homes, what standard are they going to be held to? Are they going to be held to today's standard? Are they going to be grandfathered in in this antiquated 1950s situation that was under the ground before, or that was installed before?
Yes, good question. So the permit that's been issued for the electrical main distribution line is from the transformer to each home. That's under the new code. So that's new work. It's not an alteration. It's not a repair. It's new service. So that's a plus because we want new electrical infrastructure in the park. The homes, on the other hand, are different, right? So they're going to be inspected to the life safety code of the code that was applicable at the time it was set, right? Not easy to get in there and do that, but we're going to do our best. We're not looking to bring those up to code. We want to make them safe to the code it was installed under at the time. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And I think somebody did already mention, Tom mentioned DOLA and trying to allow, to assist the homeowners if they do wish to bring them up to the current code. I mean, I think that that's, safety is the key issue here, obviously. And, you know, I have a couple other questions related to the standard of living because I'm under the impression that through this discovery, there was some acknowledgement that the water and sewer may not be up to current code. So we typically see that kind of stuff come in as a planning application, and we require that people then bring them up to code. So what are we doing with the water, if anything at all?
Water and sewer would be more of a question outside the building department. It is in there. It's a private line, right? So it's kind of like what you're the building department in. Yampa Valley Electric would normally be the one installing this line, but because it's private inside my mobile home parks, so is the water and sewer. So it's much like the KOA campground upgrade that's going on currently. So all of that review was done by your utility engineer within your own water sanitary division of the city. When it, it's private, campground owns it. But when it's not inside a building, then city water sewer division handles the review and upgrades on that. It falls under their codes, not the building code.
And I guess the question is, I mean, and it's probably a legal or technical question for our city folks, is, you know, does this trigger them needing to bring the water up to current standards? Because the water was what they were, they hit, right?
Well, they hit a private water main, right? That's a, that's a repair, is what happens there. So again, it's not a new line. They were making a repair. I don't know what the history is with how many repairs or what, any history with the sewer line. They definitely didn't hit a sewer line with this excavation dig.
Okay, I guess where I'm going with this is that this is a huge red flag for that park. I mean, if we have these homes that are catching on fire and we're just going to replace the electrical, and we've seen that there are water issues, and we're not addressing those, I think that's an incomplete fix. And I guess I'm also concerned about the other residences. And I understand that we can't proactively go out and, you know, look at them to make sure that they don't start catching on fire as well. But to me, if the infrastructure that basically was responsible for this situation is the same as the infrastructure throughout the rest of the park, and I think the state electrical engineer will assess that, I mean, aren't we just setting these other residents up for another disaster?
I don't know. I mean, we, the building department, you know, works code compliant cases in three manners, right? So that we either see stuff as staff when we're out doing our normal jobs that would draw our attention into something. We get referrals, right? Or complaints from citizens, other agencies and departments. Or we do permitted work. And then the last one is fires, right? So by me getting that phone call three weeks ago on a Wednesday at 10 o'clock from Doug, our fire marshal, that's what drew me to the 15 homes, right? So kind of what you're talking about is more along the lines of a code compliant property maintenance program or code that a community could adopt, right? Where you would, you would have an option or staffing, staffing to go out and follow a property maintenance code. But really, what we do is like code compliance work, so, and permitting work. And that's what drew us there. So I don't know if that helps answer your question, but it leads you down that path of answering it, right? If we had an international property maintenance code that we adopted outside of just dangerous buildings or unsafe structures, then you'd have a little mechanism to go out and do code compliant work. So it would lead into more health and safety, right? Not just life safety or life threatening items.
And Jennifer, did you have something you wanted to add on Sonya's questions?
Yeah, thanks, Todd. That is helpful. I think part of the confusion with the residents also is just who to talk to about which element of this. So that's very helpful.
Yeah, Sonya, to your point. So the process with DOLA is under the Mobile Home Parks Act, which we're really lucky to have. It was enacted last, just last year. A complaint has been filed by a resident. And under the law, the mobile home park owner has to provide a habitable living situation, which includes all utilities. So that private water line is private. It needs to be in good repair and maintenance to serve each owner. I believe that the complaint that was filed by one of the residents addressed issues, including water and sewer. DOLA has told us that they intend to address the electric and fire issues first and then address the sewer issues and water issues later on. So DOLA is in an enforcement investigation right now. And I think that they will be following up on those water issues. And they can move on, you know, sort of making a finding[1752.62] you know, sort of making a finding and a judgment that forces the owner to do certain improvements. I don't, you know, that's probably going to be later on down the line.
And my last question to that is certain improvements to only the affected homes or to the entire property if it's the same infrastructure?
You know, I think they are looking at the property as a whole. I think those sewer, water and sewer issues affect each unit, I'm guessing. So I think they're taking a holistic look.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay. Any other questions for the group on this one? Kathy?
Yeah. Is, other than Norma taking on kind of the role of, on the, what I'll call the social support, food, you know, the fact that they're without, they're in an emergency situation. If this was a fire, we'd know what to do. We'd have all these support systems. Is, and I'm not aware of any department in the, in the city, but I am aware of at least human services at the county. Tom, are you aware of what they're, what they can and can't do? And are they taking an active role?
I'm, and Norma may be able to answer this question better than I can, quite honestly. I know that Kelly Kissing was involved in the beginning and she was very active in trying to find housing as well as food vouchers. She did say in the beginning that their resources are limited for this kind of situation. And she didn't think that those housing, her ability to provide housing would last for weeks and weeks. But I know that they've been active and they're very aware of the process. But I don't know if they're taking advantage of that or if the county's being proactive in offering those services. And Norma may know more. I don't know.
Kathy, my understanding in speaking with some folks about this is that the initial response, as we were saying, was sort of a good surge kind of upfront response. But it's been the ongoing support that's been challenging. So when we talk about food vouchers, you know, it's $50 type of thing. And we know what the costs are in this town, especially if you're eating out and prepared in families. And so I know Norma's raised some money and has gotten some, some food cards for City Market. But that's the kind of thing that I was very troubled to learn that we're not being provided in an ongoing way. I mean, you know, look, our restaurants can open to provide meals for people who are, you know, hurting because of COVID and we can't coordinate some similar thing to this. I don't understand it. So I was under the impression that, that some of those agencies were doing more of that ongoing work. But that's one of the things that seems to be really lacking.
Right, and I look at, you know, it's United Way, it's the county, it's Lift Up. It can be churches.
And maybe.
It can be us.
Maybe what we can do is help Marshall and coordinate those resources. I mean, I think that's really, we don't really have a lot of jurisdiction to fix the line. You know, that's not, we're not able to do that ourselves. But we can certainly help with, you know, the human aspects of this and helping the people that are obviously in very serious and dire need. So I don't know if, Tom, you would continue to be the point person to help coordinate those kind of resources or if that would be somebody else?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Yeah. Norma, did you have a follow up request?
If I could just clarify, I, I won't get into the, all the community resources that have been provided to us. But I can list off the top of my head, every organization and entity and city, county, whatever, what has been given to us and what has been donated. The fire department brought over a solar charging unit at first that was, of course, restation when the wildfires began, completely understandable. We all understood that. YVA donated 40 solar battery packs to us immediately. We have had, I sit on the board of Lift Up and we have been in close communication about how they can best help us, whether we, again, we don't need clothing or like diapers. And we certainly don't need the two ceramic electric heaters that were left on my porch in the middle of summer, homes without electricity. But in terms of like organizational support, the county did initially give us $50 City Market gift certificates or gift cards and facilitated our access to Old Town Hot Springs to use the showers and the pools. I believe the fire department also helped with getting us access to the showers at the KOA. And all those are very fine and good, but again, those are finite resources. To put it into perspective, a family of five of which do live in the park, just for groceries for one week, that's $150. And that is just groceries. That's not prepared food, which is what we need right now. Arctic Ice or Arctic Liquors has also opened their doors up to us to fill a cooler if we need it with ice. And, and beyond that, it's all, it's all private donations. And there are folks in this room, of course, thank you so much to those that have given batteries and all these other necessities. For just me, party of one, beef jerky will do. But with people who have five people, there is a pregnant woman, there are older folks, there are lots of children, beef jerky morning, noon and night will not do. I am a human garbage can, though, so I'm fine with it.
So, I mean, I think unless counsel, if you have any concerns, I mean, it seems like we could, you know, say to Tom, hey, please work with these, continue to work with Norma, the group, and help coordinate whatever resources they could need, whether it's us helping provide those resources or pointing them in the right direction to get the right people in place to help them. I, it's obviously a tragic situation and we really, we want to help as much as we can.
Yeah, I think part of it too is just taking the burden off of Norma to be the, the only advocate or the, you know, the primary resource.
But it is good to have a point person for the group at the same time.
Right.
You can, you can demote yourself and find somebody else if that.
But she can't walk around, I mean, you know, she can't walk to every door and knock on that and give, hand out flyers and tell them where to take showers. And, you know, it's just not even fair to ask that of one resident. We need to help.
Well, maybe, and maybe Tom can work with them. We can work on that coordination with getting contact information and getting the word out when there are resources available, so.
We need to help.
Counsel, okay with that direction? Any other feedback for Tom or anybody else?
If there are funds available, I suggest that we contribute some to the food.
Yeah, I'd be happy to use counsel contingency. Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry you're going through this, Norma, and all the residents there. And please continue to contact Tom and coordinate on anything that you might need, okay? Yeah.
Just wondering, are there any announcements, like construction starts in the morning that need to be made in Spanish this evening? Should we do that?
I'm happy to work with me and provide that material.
Okay.
To make sure that our neighbors know this, again, I do work a full time job. So if these resources and this information can be provided to me in a one page form that I can print up at my employer's place, who have so gratefully given me a ream of paper to do so, I would, I would be honored to work with integrated community and make sure that this information is translated as it should be.
Agreed. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else, counsel, on this one? All right. Thanks, Tom, and please keep us informed as things move ahead, too. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So that brings us to community reports. And we are now on agenda item four, which is Steamboat Sports Barn. Counsel, I'm going to have to hand this over to Kathy. I have conflict issue now. Somebody, I just learned somebody in my firm helped prepare the nonprofit corporation documents for the sports barn group. So probably appropriate for me to step down and let Kathy take the lead on this one. So I'll turn it over to Kathy.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Alexis, are you going to? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alexis Wolf. I am the recreation manager here at the city of Steamboat. And I am going to share my screen. Start this presentation. So I'm here to report to all of you about the Steamboat Sports Barn and our site selection committee. I'm going to go through kind of the process that we use and the history of the project. And then Angela's going to take over for me and we go through the pros and cons of the sites and then all the staff recommendations. So on February 2 of this year, city council directed staff and Parks and Rec Commission to work with Steamboat Sports Barn to look at all the public land that the city owns to assess those city properties and determine what land might be used. That group met with Parks and Rec Commission on February 10th this year. Steamboat Sports Barn is a locally based 501(c)(3) organization. It consists of a board of directors from several local sports organizations and the business community. And they are, they have a mission to provide a first class indoor year round sports facility for generations to come. They are proposing to build somewhere around approximately $7 million building with a capital campaign, somewhere around 45,000 square feet. That will include one indoor turf field that can be used for soccer and lacrosse and other sports, and up to three hard surface courts for basketball, volleyball and those other indoor sports. They are also proposing to cover the operational requirements for the building. At that same meeting, Parks and Rec Commission directed staff to work with Steamboat Sports Barn and put together a subcommittee to go through site selection. And that included Parks and Rec Commissioners, city staff, members of Steamboat Sports Barn and community members at large. At our March 3 subcommittee meeting, we had kind of an introduction for everybody. And we went through and we realized that we needed a kind of a criteria for everybody to be able to examine all of these different sites. And we wanted everyone to be on the same page for all their criteria. We set a timeline. We set some goals for the subcommittee itself. And so at the next meeting on the 17th, we kind of introduced the criteria spreadsheet. That spreadsheet was in your packet. We set the importance values for each of that different set of criteria. And we determined what sites we were going to have on the list. We did evaluate 10 sites preliminarily. And we set the group with some homework to evaluate each of those sites independently and come back with their recommendations and their rankings. The different sites we considered are listed, listed here, different parcels of land right around these areas. One out at West End Village, Bear River Park, a parcel of land behind the Transit and Public Works Building. There is a piece right next to the Art Depot, Howellson Park, Memorial Park, Emerald Park, Rita Valentine, Ski Town and Whistler Park were all initially on our list. The list of criteria was pretty extensive, so I'm not going to read through what all of these were. But we did go through different site features of the property. We looked at the infrastructure and the services that were available at those properties. We also looked at the community planning and the growth patterns and traffic, parking, everything else that had to do with those sites. And then we looked a little bit about the anticipated costs and what costs might impact the ability to do this program or this project. We met back on March 31st and we eliminated six sites immediately with what we called fatal flaws. Those flaws included, some of the sites were simply too small. Some of them were partially owned or completely owned by other entities and not the city. And then some we just felt was going to have too much community pushback to keep on the list. So we were left with four sites, Howellson Bear River, Ski Town and Emerald. We eliminated Ski Town and Emerald because there was definitely a drive or a push not to eliminate any existing features that were already at those places. So for Ski Town Park and Emerald Park, either one of those sites would have required eliminating a ball field, a soccer field or both. We were told, the subcommittee was directed, or staff was directed to go back to the city planning department and see if the planning and engineering department had any significant obstacles that they would bring up for either Howellson Park or Bear River. Moving kind of slowly, sorry about that. Planning and engineering did not eliminate either site. We did focus our discussion on Howellson Park and on Bear River. And from there, we kind of ended up with these two sites as what we were going to focus on. I'm going to let Angela take over for now as she goes through the different sites.
Good evening, counsel. Angela Cosby, Parks and Recreation Director. First, it's really important to note that when we're looking at existing parkland, there's pros and cons with every single site. So please don't be discouraged that we're pointing out cons. I don't think we'd find a site that had no cons. Um, so to go over both sites, pros of Howellson Park, that it conforms to our Parks Recreation Open Space Trails and River Master Plan, that there's adequate space. There's existing recreation amenities with ice rink, the ski complex, as well as all of the outdoor amenities, too. Core trail access centrally located with the bus route. There's utility infrastructure already available and it has the potential for enterprise tax zone credits, which would be very helpful in the fundraising aspects. Cons of Howellson Park is traffic impacts to an already stressed area as well as parking impacts to an already stressed area. The consideration of the proposed second sheet of ice, if that did come to fruition in the future, what impacts this could have on that. It's in the 100 year flood plain, that the rodeo parking lot paving project is currently in progress. That might not have been listed on here had we been having this discussion prior to that project taking place. Drainage issues being addressed and overhead and underground electrical concerns, which aren't just as much concerns, but it would add reasonable costs to the project to have those mitigated. Looking at Bear River Park, so pros, again, it conforms to our Proster Master Plan. There's adequate space. There's existing adjacent recreation amenities. Current adjacent housing development is helping to address some of the traffic impacts. Core trail access on the bus route centrally located again. It helps conform with the expected community growth west. There's no flood plain concerns and this area too is in an enterprise tax zone credit area. Cons with Bear River Park is that the, the concept of an indoor field house facility at Bear River Park is, does not conform to the Bear River Park master plan that's adopted. And we're currently lacking open parkland in this area. So when we go back to the Proster plan that we did, there, in the plan, there's a map that shows essentially bubbles throughout the city and the overlapping bubbles to tell where we're serving, over serving and underserving. And luckily, for most part of Steamboat, we're over serving everywhere when it comes to parkland according to national standards. Our community is more active than the national average, though. However, not in this area of town. And then that doubles up is that this is also our lowest socioeconomic neighborhood within our community, too. And if we went to typical Parks and Recreation standards, that's actually the area where we need to over serve for best practices. So I need to bring that point up. Secondary access would go through neighboring private property. And additional traffic mitigation may be required. And there is concrete debris on the site that would require excavation and that would, would add to the development costs of that site, just like Howellson and the electrical. So we brought this information back to the subcommittee and we brought another update from planning and engineering. We talked with planning and engineering more about Howellson and the road that is proposed to go through Howellson Parkway in the transportation master plan and connect at 11th Street. It was noted that that construction project ranked high in implementation, although there's no timeline for completion and no funding available for the project. But if that road was completed, it might help with some of the traffic impacts of Howellson that are a current concern. And we also talked about the river takeout at Bear River Park. There were questions asked because we do receive a lot of community feedback about needing the takeout that is in that master plan and that it would not conflict with the Bear River, with the planned Bear River Park, Amper River takeout. So the final outcome of the subcommittee is they basically couldn't come to a decision. And they said both are good options and both have their flaws. In an ideal world, a sports facility could go at Howellson. Being centrally located and keeping that type of active recreation in one area would be great for the community, but it just isn't reasonable or necessarily attainable. And that Bear River Park is a great alternative. So the subcommittee provided a recommendation to Parks and Recreation Commission saying just that, that both are good with a slight upper hand to Bear River Park. Bear River Park, or I should say Parks and Recreation Commission gave a very similar recommendation. Bring both options forward to city council for consideration with priority given to Bear River Park for the project. And that is also staff's recommendation. Options moving forward is to direct staff to begin negotiations with Steamboat Sports Barn to locate an indoor field house at Bear River Park or Howellson Park, but with priority given to Bear River Park. And then another option for your consideration is to decline the project on city land. There's probably several others you could come up with as well. Myself, Alexis Wolf and Leon Rink, representing the Sports Barn, is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, questions of counsel? Michael, let's start at your end.
When I'm looking at that, I just, and again, it was so preliminary, so it really doesn't matter. I was just concerned on parking at Howellson Hill in that complex. And you say it's not an issue, but it looks like we're taking half the parking for the ice rink. And, but I mean, you must have considered that as a group, obviously. And it's still a viable option because you can do more because we have more land, right?
Yeah, parking is a challenge there. That's why between traffics and parking is why Howellson wasn't the preferred site. There could be ways to investigate that further, but they seemed significantly larger, the obstacles at Howellson than the obstacles at but they seemed significantly larger, the obstacles at Howellson than the obstacles at Bear River at this time.
Interesting. That's it.
And is that because of the second sheet proposal or just as existing conditions? Because I guess that's where I need clarity to follow up, if that's okay, Michael.
Absolutely.
Is, where are we, are we looking because we have three proposals in the exact same spot right now? Or are we looking at existing? Because from my proposal, my thought process is these are all individual and independent and should be, should not be taking precedent on one or the other at this time. So is it because of the current situation or because there's possibilities of other things going in?
It's because of the current situation. However, the second sheet does emphasize it, to be fair in answering that. And the pictures, they, those are not to scale. However, the proposed Sports Barn is significantly larger than the proposed second sheet of ice. So they couldn't fall in the same footprint. We looked into that option as well, in case the second sheet didn't happen or this was identified as a higher priority. It would need to go, it would, the fieldhouse would not be able to go where the green rectangular square is. It would need to stay or go somewhere else, but it couldn't fit in that footprint.
The fieldhouse or the barn?
The, the fieldhouse could not go. The blue square in square footage is significantly larger than the green square. So we couldn't swap.
Okay, I got what you're saying. All right, so, are you done, Michael?
Yeah, I'm good.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm good.
Okay. It says that the barn would be about 45,000 square feet, and says necessary building operation, operational requirements in addition to the fields, the indoor fields and everything. Would that include locker rooms and would there be space for meeting rooms?
I will ask Leon to come up and answer that.
Yes, what we have planned in between the turf field and the hardcore surfaces, there would be an entrance area where you would have locker rooms, bathrooms. Then the second floor would be an open area where we'd have a community type room, team meeting room, that type of thing, and everything's open. You look out into the solution. We also have space for office space as well, upstairs as well, so.
Okay, no locker rooms?
Oh, you said locker room.
Yes, locker rooms downstairs.
Okay.
And bathrooms, so.
Okay, and then Angela. If you were, I appreciate how you whittled it down. But in my mind, Whistler is the appropriate location for this. And if you were to go back and do the pros and cons on Whistler, taking out the fact that we don't own all the land, I wonder where it would have come in in the rankings. So that's just a comment for moving forward. And then, yeah, you guys, you said it was unattainable at Howellson, to your point about Howellson versus, so, thank you. Those are my questions.
Heather, did you have other questions?
I had, I had a question. So attachment number two is the site selection criteria that you referred to. In that, the only votes were for the four that you whittled down to. And I guess my concern was you had said that you hard-stopped a lot of these, and there were no votes. So did you not vote for any of these? It was just verbal discussions on the other six that they were definitive no's?
We, if my memory serves me right, in that subcommittee meeting, we started throwing out numbers, and it was clear that it, the time wasn't being utilized well for those sites. They weren't ranking high enough. So I believe we did skip forward and didn't fully rank those sites.
Okay, so that's, okay, then I'll save everything else for comments. Thank you.
All right, Sonia. Can you pull up the Bear River slide that has the visual in there?
Four point three ones are good.
So if I remember correctly, isn't that parcel, the long, narrow one up on the left-hand side, under, currently under development? Isn't that the one that Mr. Beers used to come and want to sell us for the police station?
Yes. That's under development.
This thing is under development. I'm trying to figure out what is, is it going to be? Do we know?
I've heard, maybe somebody else knows better. I believe it's apartments going in. I'm not, are we talking about the same going up to Highway 40?
Is it an RV park? Is it the RV park? I think it's the RV park.
I think so too.
Anyway, that would just be something good to know.
Rebecca knows.
Somebody knows, oh, Rebecca knows, great.
That's the RV park. It got pissed, right.
Rebecca Bessie, Planning Director. Are we talking about the property right along Lagoon?
Yes.
That is, has been approved for the Core Trail Apartments project.
I'm going to the RV park. No, that RV is over.
That is back. That's two properties over, I believe. That butts up to the Riverside neighborhood.
So I guess while we have you up here, I mean, would this, would that be any conflict? Do you see those as compatible uses, this and the, and the thing that's going in, the development that's going in?
Um, well, I think that this project would come through a development review process. So absent an application, I would hesitate to comment on land use impacts. Is that?
That's a very fair answer. Okay, um, thank you.
So Rebecca, before you, you're talking about like the road, and you're talking about the land to the left of the road.
Yes.
Is where the apartments are going in.
Right off US 40.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
One more question about the map, then Angela, I think this is for you. So to the right of the little blue square, that's, that's the little settling pond, is that right?
Yes.
So the history of Bear River Park, is it, was it a settling? I mean.
It was a wetland. It's a, no, a lagoon. It was the sewer lagoon.
Correct, it was. Sewer lagoon, so yeah, okay. My question is about that. Is there any concern about hazard or impact? I know it's been a long time, so are we clear on that?
We would require a soil analysis as a further study, as well as a traffic analysis too. It, we have been hesitant prior to getting a confirmation of site to invest the funds, to either ask the nonprofit to invest the funds or the city to invest the funds in doing that. And also that our next steps is seeing if we can get to terms in an agreement before we dive into that level of study and investment.
Okay.
Yep, we'd have to find out.
Okay, so one last question and a comment on Whistler. Whistler is a hard no for me, and I personally will run the campaign against it. So just FYI, and I think I'll be joined by Steamboat Digs Dogs. And the reason would be just that, you know, you're talking about not impacting existing uses. We have people who pay to use those ball fields for tournaments. We've got dog parks, we've got everything. Anyway, so back to the point, which is, what are we losing if we put it at Bear River Park? We're losing open space.
Correct.
So have we considered a mitigation plan for how we are planning to acquire open space elsewhere?
That's staff's recommendation.
Okay, do we, we have our eye on something or are we just committing to the concept of that?
We'll need to commit to the concept of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. No questions?
All right, I have.
I have one more.
I have one, okay, no, go ahead.
Isn't this a wetland?
It is not a wetland, no.
Okay. A settling pond with sewage.
Um, I would like, I would ask Leon. Other than, other than the city, have you had any discussions with the school district, especially west of town where they put in a new school?
We have had discussions with private landowners, and we've had internal discussions about this city, available plots of lands that they do have. We've, as a board, felt we would come to the city first because we would like to provide the opportunity for the community to have a centrally located facility. In addition, you know, the concept of a organization like ours, Steamboat Sports Barn, putting up an athletic facility like this is in the, in the master plans, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan there. So we're really just kind of following that first. But that is still an option for us to look at private land options, which we are in discussions with, and school district options as well, so.
So a school would, school district is now pri, private, this public. Okay. My other question is, the $7 million figure that you, that's included in the staff plan, when was the last time you priced that?
Rough, and we, we are quite aware of the increase in construction materials. We've revisited with our architectural planner almost about two, two and a half months ago to revisit that. The design that we are pursuing is a, it's a steel frame building that is pre-constructed. There's facility, or corporations around the country that will pre-produce these, these facilities and design them to your specifications. And so there have been some slight increases in prices, but we've been assured that they have not gone up significantly. And that was as of about two and a half months ago, so.
And what's your timing?
In terms of?
In terms of, obviously, you're, you're coming forward to us asking for land, but then you would have to go fundraise not only the cost of the building, but an ongoing maintenance? What, what's your timing if, in a perfect world?
In a perfect world, we would anticipate, if we could identify a location, that's obviously our key component here. But in a perfect world, we would hope to be able to begin our, we've already begun some fundraising and established a capital campaign committee comprised of some community leaders here. But we would like to ideally be able to break ground sometime next year, next summer, and have completion in sometime in the fall of 2023 would be ideal. So.
Okay.
But we understand also that whether we work with the city option or private land option, the timeframe could change, obviously.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? I see Mr. Jamison getting up.
Good evening. Like to see you back in council chambers. It's been a long time.
Long time.
Bill Jamison Burgess. Pardon?
Nice smile.
Thank you. Bill Jamison Burgess Creek Road. I wasn't planning on talking about this until I heard the land swap idea to replace land at Bear River with open space someplace else. Earth to City Council. What are you thinking? If you're, you're going to buy land to give land to a private developer, and you're going to turn around and ask the citizens for a two-mill property tax? You guys haven't got enough money. And you want more? And this is what you're going to use it for? Seriously? It's a great concept. But I don't see where you're in a position to be buying land so a sports barn can be put in any place. So if, if the idea is you're going to have to replace open space by purchasing more open space to give up what you just gave away to a private developer, that should be a non-starter. I'll make a comment about parking at Howellson. You've got a parking problem at some of your major sports facilities that can't handle the traffic that you already got, whether it's down at Emerald Park or Howellson. You know, you guys need to take a serious look at what kind of additional demands you're putting on your infrastructure that you can't service. And if you haven't got parking, there ought to be severe restrictions on people putting on tournaments that are putting in thousands of people at events that you can't handle. And the city manager ought to be denying special event permits if there isn't adequate infrastructure, including parking, to support these things. So before you pick any site, make sure that you fully understand what's being proposed other than a few occasional games on the site and what the maximum demands are going to be put on your existing infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jim Cook, 52 Spruce Peak. I currently sit on the fundraising committee for the Sports Barn. As you know, I have opinions. This project belongs at Howellson. It should be there. Everything should be centralized for the sporting events and for the kids because your kid could get on a bicycle, and they say you were going to Howellson, you know where he's going to be. And I think that's the, the number one importance to this site. Mr. Jamison suggests that we just shut everything down. We can't do that. Our kids are very important. It's a portent commodity for us planning our future. And as a fundraiser for this project, I'm going to have a lot more fun raising money for a project at Howellson than I will at Bear River. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Robin Hall. I'm a resident downtown. These are my sons, Will and Alex. And I'm really excited to see this opportunity. First off, thanks for offering to, to hear us out here, but excited to see the potential for a year-round indoor sports complex here in Steamboat. This community is everything to me and my family. And we just think that this will give us an opportunity to build a deeper and wider community here. It's going to support inclusivity, diversity, and it's going to allow for easier and further entry points to activity for kids of all socioeconomic backgrounds. It provides safe opportunities for youth and offers great ways to develop them into future athletes and avid contributors to this great place that we call home. It can also serve as a home base for summer camps, after-school camps, other programming that we've lacked space for for so many years. We all know this town is growing, and we're certainly missing out on so many revenue generating opportunities due to lack of space and infrastructure. So I think it's a welcome addition. I think my boys definitely agree, as well as the rest of the kiddos here. So thank you so much for even considering and for all that you do for all this, this, all of us in this great town. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment?
Hi, guys. My name's Joey Rind. I've probably coached some of your children already. This is a pursuit of passion for myself and my kids, who I coach both of them now. I've been involved with Steamboat Youth Sports, and particularly the Soccer Association for 30 years as a board member, an age group director, coach, and administrator. And again, this has been a pursuit of passion. We've contributed positively to the turf over at the high school. Now, we've also purchased the goals that are going to go with the middle school. And we'd like to take this to the next level and provide an opportunity for our kids to play the sport that they love year-round. And this way, we'll be able to better compete with those towns on the front range as well that have these facilities in place already. We know it's a very hard decision for you guys to make, but it's an important decision to keep our, one of our, one of our fundamental principles at the club is inclusivity. And we would like to keep as many people involved in the sport that I love and the sport that we love for as long as possible. I think my kids might have something to add.
Hi, I'm Nathan Rind. And if this Sports Barn was put in place, it would allow for all, all kids in this program to train all year round, which can help more people to just train all year round. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zayn Rind. Soccer warms my heart up very much. And when I have a bad, bad day at school and I have soccer practice after it, I know that I'm going to have a good time, and it always just brings me joy to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Amy Sakowitz. I live at 945 Twilight Lane. And thank you for taking time to listen to us tonight. I've been a resident here 14 years. And coming back into this community a few years ago, I definitely see this opportunity in void within our community and think we need it. I am on the Capital Campaign Committee. I feel passionate about this. My daughter plays volleyball. I'm not sure if she'll ever even use this, but I feel strongly about this, and that is why I'm giving my time. So I just wrote a note because really, please invest in our youth. Their greatest asset. Please invest in our youth. Mental health concerns and depression are at an all-time high with kids today. Please invest in our youth. Team sports develop social skills, teamwork, friendships, fitness, and leadership skills. Please invest in our youth. The Sports Barn would be a positive resource for our kids. Please invest in our youth. They deserve our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Additional public comment?
You have three people with their hands up.
Oh, thank you very much.
So Michael Vandal.
Hi, uh, can you guys hear me? I think, can't see, but, um, my name's Michael Vandal. I'm the head of high school boys, basketball coach here in Steamboat. There I am. I grew up here in Steamboat. Been a member of this community for a long time. I also. I also was a director of basketball operations for high-altitude basketball from 2015 to 2018. And I can just give a little bit of insight to the difficulty of running programs with the limited gym space that we have. We were very limited to run the programs that we wanted to, to expand. We've had multiple outside organizations wanting to bring leagues and, you know, possible opportunities for our youth here to the valley, but we've had to turn them away because we don't have the time, we don't have the gym space, the capacity to expand our offerings for basketball to, for all of our kids. The school district has been very good to us and worked with us, but there's always constant constraints on, they get over 20 to 25 outside user groups wanting to use the gyms. They're really the only gyms in the town, and I think a facility like this would do wonders for not just basketball, but volleyball, soccer, lacrosse, adult programs possibly, which are pretty much non-existent for basketball in the community right now. So I just vote a very high vote of support for this, this sports barn and what it can offer to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next hands up is Angela's phone. Is there Angela out there?
Hi, this is Angela Campbell. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My address is 345 Boulder Ridge Road, and I'm one of the board members for Whiteout Volleyball Club. I have two daughters who have participated in volleyball in both the school programs and with Whiteout. I know that volleyball is not a sport you typically think of when you think of Steamboat, but it is growing and continues to grow in popularity here. I think a year-round sports complex is desperately needed with the increase in population, the gym availability, especially in the wintertime, is very hard to come by, and I don't see it getting any easier for my children and many others that I know. Volleyball is an indoor sport that they love, that they can participate in, in the wintertime, which is so crucial for their physical and mental health. I know that talks for the sports complex started before COVID and quarantining, but after having experienced quarantining, I believe that the sports complex is needed now more than ever. It was very hard for my youngest daughter. It took a severe emotional toll on her and consequently our family. And while we respect the need for quarantine, we saw firsthand how hard it can be for someone's emotional well-being. Had we had an indoor sports complex during that time, she would have had the opportunity to meet most of her physical and mental health needs while staying within the regulations the county had at the time for quarantine. Also, having a sports complex would allow Steamboat to host volleyball and other sports tournaments, which is great for many reasons, and one of them being that Steamboat families might not have to travel as much to compete in tournaments. Right now, Whiteout teams have to travel for every single tournament. How great would it be to have it here and bring in the extra support and benefits, all of that that goes along with that? I know that it can be a multiple multifunction space that will be needed in the future for these reasons and many, many more. I know there was mention about open space, and I'm not sure. I'm sure there's regulations and guidelines you have to go by for that, but one could argue that it actually opens up more space in the wintertime as opposed to not having any availability. I know I speak for the Whiteout Volleyball Club board members when I say that we strongly support this complex, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Charlie's hand is up. Charlie?
Hi, I'm Charlie Reifman. I live 4687 Street, and I'm an upcoming sophomore. And I feel like a barn house and an open field house for sports is very beneficial for our town for many reasons. One being is how busy it's becoming in Steamboat. And growing up here, knowing that we don't have many places to go to rather hang out with friends or work on the sports you're playing, and whenever you can try to find a spot to hang out and play sports, is it's most likely covered with teams, clubs, or anything that's going on there. And my opinion is, I feel like the more spots we have is the better place for Steamboat, and it would just have another spot to hang out with friends.
Thank you very much. Angelica, you have your hand up.
Hi, my name's Angelica Salinas. I live in Oak Creek, Colorado, and I am commenting as a coach and director for Whiteout Volleyball Club. And I'd just like to point out that this would first and foremost be a space for locals and for local youth, a space, like Amy said, for them to learn lifelong skills such as teamwork, dedication, and so much more. But next, I'd just like to quickly touch on how a facility like this would make our community more inclusive. All of the other, all of the indoor sports we represent currently, soccer, basketball, volleyball, lacrosse, have a low barrier of entry financially, especially compared to other sports that this community is popular with, such as skiing and riding, mountain biking, and water sports. Many of Whiteout's athletes are those that cannot afford those other sports. All they need to play volleyball is athletic clothes and knee pads, and if they don't have knee pads, we provide it for them. We have a scholarship program. We've never turned an athlete away who wants to try to play volleyball, and we've never turned an athlete away because of financial issues. So investing in a facility like this would help make our more, community more inclusive so that all youth can participate in competitive and recreational programming. And I just, I think that's such an important point as we talk about diversity and inclusion and how, what a space like this would do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment in, on the Zoom call? Please raise your hand if there is. All right. All right, then we will come back to council with any final questions or comments. And again, this is direction. There's no motion. There's no, we're just work, giving direction to staff. Any other questions? Okay.
So you measured the building in square footage, but not in acres impacted. Do you have a sense of what the footprint of that space would be and what we would need to replace if we were to put that in a parkland area?
We need roughly about two and a half to three acres. Obviously, the more acreage we have, the better we can accommodate parking, but for this building footprint, about 2.25 to 2.5 acres.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I have a few.
All right.
When we're looking at Bear River, I'm struggling with where adequate parking is there.
Adequate parking currently is not there. The planned parking lot would need to be fully developed, and after our parking study was complete, I'm assuming we would probably need to increase it.
And so that would also cut into that open space footprint then, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Another question would be, you know, I'm fully in support of a sports barn. Let me, let me be very clear. My, my question is, is a sports barn, maybe I'm early to the game on this, but is this sports barn a public? Is this like the tennis center where anybody from the public can use it? Or is this really going to be for 970 Hoops, Whiteout Volleyball, Steamboat Soccer Club, and Steamboat Lacrosse?
It's my understanding and Leon's welcome to comment as well, is that it's for all of the different community groups to be able to reserve space and utilize.
So let me, let me reiterate my question. You had Charlie who called in and said that this would be a great place for his buds to go and play some hoops and hang out. Is that an option, or do they have to be a part of 970 Hoops?
The way we have it structured now, they would have to be part of an organization. You know, say if we had an open gym program for high-altitude basketball, they could come at a designated time and play, you know, basketball or soccer, whatever they wanted. In terms of just dropping in and using the facility at this time, no, that's not how we have it structured.
So the structure is going to be somewhat like the ice rink in the sense that there'll be open gym time for each specific sport?
If that's what they so desire, yes. Most of the programming obviously will come through the existing soccer club, Whiteout Volleyball, High Altitude Basketball, Lacrosse, any other youth community groups that would want to use it. There's, when we did research around the country of other facilities like this, it's not just sport-oriented. There's other groups that would be able to use the facility and rent the facility out, like a Boys and Girls Club or Girl Scouts. If you wanted to use it for a day camp and it was available, they would have the opportunity to come and do that. So, but in terms of just going down and having the gym open and walking in and playing, that's not how we envision it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had one more real quick, just, and Angela, you could probably help me out with this. In relation to the experience we have with the tennis pickleball, and that group has a public-private partnership where they're coming together, asking for a lease from the city, they're going to pay for this facility, and we are going to own it if something ever happened in the long run and they couldn't whatever perform, the city would have this asset, correct?
Correct.
Is this set up the same way?
It is not set up yet. That's the way it's been presented, is wanting an agreement that's similar to pickleball, but staff's, I guess, option moving forward tonight and staff's recommendation is direction to begin those negotiations. So we'd probably have some preliminary conversations and have an executive session with city council to get your marching orders on what you would like it to look like.
Okay, thank you. So it's preliminary, the ultimate, really preliminary, a lot more than the tennis pickleball facility came to us. That was a lot more advanced than this is right now. This is conceptual at this point.
This is conceptual at this point, and I would also like to point out that we would be doing and requiring a space needs analysis, a business operation plan, but they have to meet all of the planning codes. So this is conceptual. It's asking permission to go down that road and starting those negotiations to make sure we're headed in the right direction.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Comments? I'm going to start at this end. Liesel?
Sure. I think there's a severe need for something like this in our community. I actually used to coach Whiteout volleyball myself, and I mean, those girls were practicing till 10:00, 10:30 at night, cutting practices short. We'd have to warm up in the hallways of the schools to get, I mean, it was just, it was very challenging to find court time, and I know all the other sports are having the same issue. So I, I'm elated to see this actually coming forward. I've heard kind of gossip about something like this for several years now. I do agree with Jim Cook that Howson just makes way more sense to me, but the traffic piece in parking can be very concerning. So I think my hard part right now is I'm not ready to say Bear River Park because I don't want to give up on the Howson idea, but I am 100% behind the idea of going forward with this.
Sonya?
Well, so developed rec is wonderful for many people, and you know, I'm just going to once again reiterate that I think we have a disproportionate emphasis on developed rec in our parks, open space program, and I'd love to see as much emphasis put on open space and natural areas as developed rec. But that being said, I'm not going to take that out on this project because it's not their fault, and I think what they're bringing to the table is a good opportunity for a lot of youth. So I could definitely support moving forward with discussions. I think some of the things that Michael brought up are very important for us, just as far as, you know, what are we actually agreeing to? I don't think that, as one of the public commentators said, we're agreeing to giving away our land. I don't think that we're, you know, so anyway, I think the devil's in the details of what any kind of agreement would look like in the future. As far as the site goes, I think Bear River is the better of the two sites, and partially it's related to where I think the growth is coming in the community, partially it's related to the opportunities that I see in Emerald to be more of a park and to be used in different ways. So I say, carry on, raise lots of money and bring good stuff for the kids.
Heather, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I'm really glad Heather asked the question about kind of, are there open hours? Is this just the groups doing it? I would really encourage you guys to look at if there's any possibility of doing open hours and giving it fully open to the community. I think it would be a huge asset for youth to go on the weekends and do something that's productive for themselves. So I understand that may not be the initial concept, but I really encourage you to try and add that in.
Heather?
You stole my thunder. No, it's all good. So I, again, I actually played collegiate volleyball, so I'm a big fan of any type of sports facility like this, but I do not want to coach, so don't ask me. But I will say, when, when people come to council to ask for our even initial blessing for public lands to use for private use, I am going to say, I'm sorry, no. My concern is that a public land should be for the public. Yes, your constituents that you serve in your sports teams are public, but that is not enough to constitute use by public. So I am going to go with Liesel and state, again, something in your plan when you go through this development, wow, we're in the dark. Where we go in this development scenario is that you, you must integrate, in my opinion, and this is only one person, a way to make sure that there are public uses that are not directly allocated to your sports associations. That is, in all fairness, what becomes fair for the city. You have taxpayer dollars being used for private use, and I can't support something like that unless there is a very hard window of opportunity for people in the public to come and use that facility because it is on their, on their land that they've paid taxes for. Other than that, I think, you know, I'm sure space needs analysis will happen for, for whatever site you choose. I don't feel comfortable about saying yes to either, and I think realistically speaking, when you start doing soils analysis over Bear River Park, it may be a hard stop no. And as much as it would be inefficient for you to do two soils analysis, it may open many ideas as to where you're really supposed to go. I don't want to lean either way. I think the soils, I think I'm going to, I think I know what the soils are going to be like in Bear River, so I think that may be your answer. But I also agree that there's some parking situation and issues with Howson. I'm not a party to either. It doesn't matter, really. I think there's other things that you need to iron out with your operations. So I'm going to, I'm going to stay neutral on this site location.
I agree with you on public access, by the way. I just didn't articulate that point. Thank you.
All righty, Robin. I think the parking is going to be an issue at either location, so I think by doing the site analysis and going the next step, I think you're going to have to do both locations if we were to move forward and say, yeah, we, we agree with working with you guys for a piece of property. I do agree with everybody in the need for opportunities for youth in our community, and I also agree with the fact that, just like we have public ice time, we need to have public basketball court time and volleyball court time and soccer time, and it has to be at hours that are convenient for the public as well, not at 10 o'clock at night because I can, you know, you'll have staffing issues no matter when that time might be. It will definitely be an asset to the community. I challenge you to go to the school district now. There's 22 acres west of town.
Yeah.
And there is Whistler. And I think if you look at west of town, and if we were to end up at Bear River, you're only gone a little bit further to a new elementary school and 22 acres. And we're also, I think, talking with members of the community and other entities about housing. This could be a super cool thing to do where we have more outdoor areas for public use as well, more baseball fields, more soccer fields. It could become a sports complex indoor and outdoor, and there's more space, it's accessible, and there'll be a lot more room for parking. So I appreciate the fact that you came to us first, but I really think you have to go to the school district as well because these kids are not only in our school district, but the school districts surrounding us, and I think we have to look at everything. We also have to look at the fact that hopefully the growth will be west of town. Why in the world do we want to bring more cars downtown? Jim, I agree. I think Howson Hill is the right location for it. We don't have the space for it, and the parking analysis would probably figure that one out. Howson is the right place to put it in order to keep everything in one spot. Halston's the right place to put it in order to keep everything in one spot. We don't need hundreds of more cars coming down Lincoln and going across the Fifth Street Bridge and not having adequate parking for it. And you have ball fields being used by adult leagues. You've got something going on at the Halston Hill itself. You've got something going on where they're doing BMX. You've got kids doing ice hockey or adults. And then you have a complex that has run in a soccer game, three basketball courts going and volleyball. Where are we going to put all these people unless everybody gets an electric scooter in town? So I really think you have to look at, I challenge you to go to the school district now, even while we're doing this.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, good presentation. I like the idea, I think it's important for our community right now. I mean, we, we need an indoor sports facility because we have five, six months of snow. And that is the reality of where we live, plain and simple. And, you know, when I first moved here, they talked a lot about, you know, going, having a rec center like Longmont and some of these big places. Westminster's got a really cool rec center and, you know, we don't have that. We have the Old Town Hot Springs. And we've kind of succumbed to using that as our go-to rec center. But the reality is the municipality that we have, that we are, need to spend some tax dollars on indoor recreational facilities because we have so much snow that we're outside, we can't play. And it is a detriment to our youth. It is a detriment to our youth that we can't compete at the same level as some other places because we are choosing to live where there's a lot of snow. That stated though, I think that the biggest part that I'm looking for from you guys is your programming. So, you know, I'm not sold really at all on your programming. I mean, it's been brought up by a couple of our city council members that we're looking for a public component to it. But I have to caution ourselves, did we require that with the pickleball? You know, so pickleball, huh? It's a public facility, I understand. And so on the public land and they're, no, but, but they have a chance to build it up. So what they're doing is the, the idea about the pickleball is that they had their team to go out and try to fundraise for a facility for them to manage and run on city property. Okay, that's a public facility. So I'm looking at your programming and what you're trying to present to be equal to something like that. And if it's anything more on the, heavier on the private side, you probably won't get my support. So I'm really looking at trying to find out what your programming is. So I think that it's important that you put it together with your team and say, this is what we're providing to the community and bring up these points that we have regarding the public sector. I'm curious about how your profit margin, how your balance sheet and how that's going to work when it comes to a facility like this and how it's not going to be able to provide locals, you know, kids that want to do a pickup basketball or something like that. They're not going to be able to use it because it's going to be booked solid and it will be booked solid. You know, we're already booked solid as it is, right? So in your programming, I'm encouraging you guys to move forward, I would think we move forward. But this is something you have to add to this. Because if you candy coat over it and make it seem like that, the next step's going to be a dead fish in my eyes. So you need to kind of make this thing just to work out how you're going to make this sports barn a public facility that's run by a private organization. Okay, and then on the second part is Halston Hill's fine. I think it is a great location. I think maybe you should include somewhat of a parking garage for Halston Hill. I'm just kidding, I know that it's something that's out there. But reality is, we have a parking issue. And if we're going to just try to think of ground surface for a car, we may have to go to a second floor on that. And it may not just necessarily be on the sports barn. It could be a private, you know, CIP that we're doing with the city. Not that we want to add parking somewhere, but if we start keeping to add a second sheet of ice to the one sheet of ice, to a sports barn, to the fields, to an amphitheater, to whatever, parking is going to have to be addressed regardless. It can't be a onesie twosie thing like, well, based upon this one, we have enough parking. Well, based upon that one, we have enough parking. That, that doesn't hunt, that we have to do something more. So parking is going to be interesting to see what you guys come up with. I'm not going to solve it here. I think it's on you guys in the long term to kind of help Halston Hill. And I also think that the transportation mobility plan extending 11th Street is something we should accelerate a little sooner, not only for the potential of a sports barn, but I think overall, we need safety of Halston Hill and having an 11th Street bridge that goes back up and over to Yampa Street is going to be something that would be needed. That's all I got, but I'm supportive of the project, so you've got a yay for me.
All right, my comments are, a lot of them have been said already. While I understand that there is a demand for youth sports for 20, 12 months out of the year, especially in the, in the winter months, I am very concerned about that while this may be a nonprofit, it's not a public facility. And you've heard other council members express a concern about public dollars, public land for a specific group of nonprofits. And I would say that if you sit down with Parks and Rec staff and go over what the template that was used as the pickleball, and you can then decide whether or not you want to move forward with the city. Because I think that's, you know, we're still seeing an evolution there. I don't want us to get down the road like the second sheet of ice a couple of years ago, where they came to us and said, we have all the money, we, we can, we, we have fund, we can fundraise this. And then it fell apart. And like Robin, I think you should go talk to the school. Because school is where the kids are. And we are, you know, we do have a new facility out west of town. And I think there are benefits. I think if you're going to pursue a city project, you're going to have to spend some due diligence money upfront and do either soils, traffic, you're going to have to do some, quite a bit more in order to get my vote. So I don't think, I mean, other than continue talking to staff, I don't, I'm not hearing an overwhelming endorsement, except maybe one or two, to say, yes, tonight, go forward. And I think you're split, we're split about the preferred location. Just like the planning or the Parks and Rec Commission and the, and the public committee that formed, they came down to, we don't know, we're, let's, let's let city council decide. Well, we don't know either. So both, both sites have pros and cons and I think you're going to have to spend some money. So do we want to take a straw vote? I mean, is there, I mean, I'm not sure staff, we gave you enough direction, we gave you a lot of different opinions.
I have the direction I need.
Thanks. Great, good.
All right, well then, thank you very much and thanks for everybody's input. So it's 7:20, we typically take a break at seven. I'm going to go ahead and say, we'll take our 10-minute break and we'll come back at whatever.
Whatever's next.
Whatever's next.
10 minutes, thank you.
Yeah, I get the last one.
We're not going out of town on Friday night.
Yeah, there's no.
Still on community reports, we're on agenda item five. This is the 2022 capital improvement plan scoring matrix. And Kim Weber is here to present this one.
Good evening, council. Kim Weber, Finance Director. So as the city manager mentioned earlier in the evening, the 2022 budget is well underway. We start the process with our capital projects, and they are due to the Finance Department this week from the departments. So the next step will be ranking and scoring and going through all of those individual projects. So tonight, we'd like to get your head nod or get your input on the scoring matrix. About 10 years ago, we started a process of making sure we had a balanced six-year CIP. At one time, it was just all the projects went into a CIP. And if we couldn't fund it the first year, we just kept pushing them out. So at the end, you had $100 million in projects. We now have a realistic balanced CIP. Along with that, we implemented a scoring matrix that's pretty similar to what you're being presented tonight. A few tweaks along the way, but it just gives us the opportunity to understand what council's priorities are. Can it come up with a non-arbitrary way of ranking the projects? Last year, for example, we had 61 projects submitted by the departments. We were able to fund 34 of them. And so we were able to rank them based on this criteria and put them in an order. It's not an absolute. It doesn't mean that because one project ranked low, we can't do it. And I know I've heard a few times that based on our scoring matrix, we know Parks and Rec project will ever get approved, but we have actually 11 projects. And of those 34 were Parks and Rec projects. And about half of the projects that Parks and Rec submitted were actually funded in the six-year CIP in 2021. And with the building use tax estimates for this year, along with the estimates that we'll have for 2022, I feel more confident that we'll be actually talking more about staff capacity to complete projects than we will be on a funding basis. So let me share the criteria that we have. As I said, this is what we used for 2021 as well. And we tweaked it a little bit from 2020, just a couple of the wording. But we also have multipliers on it. Of course, satisfaction of legal contractual number one priority. If we have to do something and it has the highest ranking. Health and safety, highest ranking as well. Those numbers, the 775331, those are the multipliers. So if you rank high on contractual, it's going to move to the top right away. Then we look at fiscal efficiency. This is kind of, you know, is it going to cost more if we wait? Is it just going to deteriorate more and cost more? So we talk, that's probably the hardest criteria that we have at a management team level. We're like, well, yeah, costs are probably going to go up. It's probably going to cost more. So we do a lot of negotiating on that line. And then aligns with council goals, visions, and policies. So we take into account the, we'll take into account the Climate Action Plan, we'll take into account the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And we discuss a lot of those. Community benefit, that comes a lot from the community survey, which is helpful for our discussion. We also talk about how many people it'll serve. So core trail is going to serve a lot more people than maybe a tennis court. So we have those discussions. And then private funding, we don't like to make the decision just solely based on private funding because there's always additional maintenance costs going forward. But we do take it into consideration. We rank these, bring back our preliminary recommendations to City Council in September. And then we can move things around, make adjustments, and then it comes back to you in October during the budget process. So I'd love for any feedback on our current scoring matrix or if you'd like to see changes.
Hey, council, any questions or concerns on the CIP scoring matrix? Michael, you had something?
Just one little thing. On the bottom of that sheet that you're looking at, it has private funding weighting one, and then it has 80% to 105, 4, 3, 2, 1. What does that mean?
So we rank all of these based on a scale of one to five. So when we look at private funding, we'll say, okay, if we are getting 20, or let's say we're getting 15% of a project in private funding, it'll get a one in that category. So every category is ranked one through five.
And then the other question that I have is, and this is, how, in the history, how subjective is this? There's this trying to be objective.
It's trying to be objective, but it's definitely subjective. Because when we talk about health and safety, we have a lot of discussions. We rank them as a team. And so we have the project manager come in and present the project. This is what we plan to do. This is the cost, this is why. And then we go around the room and we say, okay, management team, how does this rank on satisfaction of legal contractual? Okay, we have this agreement, but are we really tied to it? Or could we actually eliminate that service? And so there is subjectivity in it, but it's a lot more objective than any other process we've ever done.
And Kim, I was going to say, I believe it's a lot more objective than it is subjective. Would you agree with that?
Oh, yeah, especially if you rewind 10 years.
Yeah, and as we deliberate this, you know, we've got management teams. So there's, I think, 13 of us in there. Most of us agree on the numbers right out of the chute. Or if we do debate a number, it's usually splitting between a three or four, or something like that, and then we debate it and so forth. So quite a bit of objectivity involved.
Other questions, feedback? Any concerns with the way the matrix is set up? Any concerns? We've used it in the past, but no concerns?
I'm going to, I'm going to just make one comment. I think the weighting of the private funding, I feel as though this is going to become more and more as we continue to ask people to give dollars and give monies to make things count. More of an imperative issue than the one weight that we give it. So I guess I'm wondering if anybody else feels the same or if we're just cool with how it works. But I think we did put private funding in here since our tenure, right? And I think it is doing some good, but I would like to see it do more good because I think it does help when we're asking a sports barn, or a sports club, or a second sheet, or any of these Parks and Rec projects that never move up to the top, even if it's not something privately coming to us. It does help if they know that they will have more inclusivity in the subjectiveness of this, if the weighting is heavier. That's all.
That seemed, it seemed low to me.
Yeah, so that was my only comment is I think that's where I feel, you know, what is a private dollar worth? And is it worth just that low weight? Or should it be higher weighted?
So that thing's always been in here as far as I've been around and had a weighting and been a decision-making factor. And the way that I've looked at it is the numerical value is not as important to me as the narrative and the discussion that the management team will have. And as Kim said, you know, this is a ranking. But if, when he comes forward and says, hey, you know, I've got a matching funds that we need to bring 20% to the table for a project, but it's sixth on the list, not first. Management team will talk about that and say, you know, is this something we need to bring forward? So I'm comfortable with leaving it where it is just because I know that they don't miss opportunities for grant funding and outside funding. So I don't know that it needs to be higher in number value for me.
Other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
Heather, I'm wondering if number five won't, as far as community benefit.
Right.
If you have private funding, but it's really, again, I'll use the pickleball.
Right.
There was a community benefit to that. So I think that might help.
Kind of weigh that.
Balance it off.
I mean, I just look at what we do for CDOT projects or any type of DOLA grants. It's like, we're doing such high matches, and we're considered because we are matching at a higher rate. And it's like, well, as a private funder, what are they looking at us going, okay, are we going to want to fund if we're not really getting our bang for the buck, so to speak, on a CIP? That's all.
Okay. It's also a little bit difficult to rank private funding because we're usually judging intent.
Right.
Fund.
That is correct. I agree, I'm just saying, it's just.
The pinky swear approach. You don't trust that, Gary?
We've had some experiences in the past.
All right. Anybody else, any other concerns with the matrix? Okay. Is there any public comment on item five, the CIP scoring matrix? Anybody here to comment on that? See anybody on Zoom? Okay. So it sounds like we'll keep the matrix as is, Kim. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so that brings us to our consent calendar. Please bear with me as I read this into the record. Items on the consent calendar may be reviewed and commented upon in the same manner as other agenda items. Any member of the council or the public may request withdrawal of any item from the consent calendar for further discussion at any time prior to approval. If items are not removed, they may be approved with a single motion. Agenda item six, first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 26 of the Steamboat Springs Revised Municipal Code by amending section 802 to revise the definition of family TXT 21-02. Agenda item seven, first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance vacating pedestrian and bicycle easements and the boiler room easement located on Gondola Square condominiums and Lot 1 and 2, ski hill subdivision replata parcel D. Agenda item eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Steamboat Springs approving an application for conditional use development plan and major variances DPVC 21-03, Sundance North Village filing two, Lot 2, Anglers 400. Agenda item nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Steamboat Springs approving an application for a preliminary plat and major variance PPV 21-03, Greenhorn Ranch. Agenda item 10, resolution of the City Council of the City of Steamboat Springs adopting the Steamboat Springs Transportation and Mobility Plan. Agenda, agenda item 11, a resolution adopting the Route County Climate Action Plan. Agenda item 12, a resolution acknowledging appointments to the Planning Commission. Agenda item 13, a resolution revising section 15 of City Council Parliamentary Rules of Order relating to remote attendance at City Council meetings. Agenda item 14, first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance approving a second supplement to an out-of-district water and sewer services agreement between Mount Warner Water and Sanitation District and the Steamboat Ski and Resort Corporation, and providing an effective date and setting a hearing date. And agenda item 15, first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance adopting the City of Steamboat Springs election code, repealing all conflicting ordinances, setting a hearing date, and providing an effective date. I'm going to pull item six for brief presentation and some discussion. And I'm also going to pull agenda item eight for a quick disclosure. Council, does anybody else want to pull any of the other items? Nobody else on council?
I want to pull 13.
You want to pull 13? Okay, I'll pull that one. Anybody else, council? Want to pull any of the other items? Does anybody in the public wish to pull any of items seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, or 15 for any further discussion? Anybody on Zoom or anybody here in the audience wish to pull any of those items for discussion? Hey, looks like nobody. So council, I would like to look for a motion to approve on consent items seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, and 15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer and a second by Bucino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, passes seven to zero. So that brings us up to agenda item six. And Rebecca, I pulled this one. I was hoping you could just give us a brief presentation about what we're doing here, and then we'll see what discussion we have.
I'm sure, happy to. Rebecca Bessie, Planning Director. So just as the president just mentioned, we'll do a brief presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. The CDC defines the definition of family differently based on the type of dwelling unit. So it allows for up to three unrelated people living together in a single family or duplex unit and up to five unrelated people in a multiple family unit. This distinction dates back to 1990, when the City Council at that time amended the definition of family to up it from three to five in multiple family units. And I've included that ordinance in your packet for background information. Part of City Council's housing goal that you have established included reviewing the definition of family to determine if we could make any amendments to it that would increase opportunities for housing in our community. So in keeping with that goal, staff did present a couple of options to Planning Commission at their recent work session, as well as during their June public hearing. Planning Commission recommended approval of an amendment, text amendment to our CDC that would amend the definition of family in three ways. The first would be to allow up to five unrelated people to live together in any type of dwelling unit. So eliminating that distinction between single family and multiple family units. It would also allow for an additional unrelated person to live together with a family of related persons. So it would allow for some roommate situations. And then lastly, it proposes to change the term domestic servant to domestic worker, just to bring that terminology up to today. We have received one letter of comment that was from the ski corps, and that is also included in your packet. And as I mentioned, Planning Commission recommended approval as presented to your ordinance in your packet tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Rebecca. Questions for Rebecca from anyone? I had a question, maybe it's more of a philosophical one, but I guess I'm a little curious. It feels arbitrary how we define family in the first place. And I guess I'm wondering, why do we do it in the first place? Why is this something we should even do? I mean, I think it's, I think it's a tough call to say whether three people, five people, 10 people. I'm not sure the number is really all that relevant in the relationships. So I guess maybe you could give us some feedback on that, Rebecca.
Happy to.
Yeah.
So I've done some research into this type of zoning regulation. And it dates back, I believe, to like, maybe about the 1960s or 70s. There was a lot of concern about single-family neighborhoods and protecting the character of those neighborhoods. And so it's not necessarily uncommon in community zoning codes, although there is, I think, a trend more recently to move away from this and eliminate the definition of family. I did want to just make clear that the intent of this kind of a zoning standard or definition is not to address safety or occupancy capacity of a building, but rather, it's intended to address issues of neighborhood character. I don't know if that answers your question, but it is something that we are seeing other communities move away from. But it's also not necessarily uncommon to have such a definition.
Yeah. And to me, the occupancy and life safety issues seem much more important, I guess, than the government deciding, you know, who's a family and who's not. But anyways, that's the concern I've had in looking at this, so.
Did you look at the veil one? Because I was looking at that, and I thought that was more kind of aligned with what you're commenting on. And that one says, just for the public, "An individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption excluding domestic servants together in a dwelling unit used as a single housekeeping unit, or a group of unrelated persons not to exceed two persons per bedroom plus an additional two persons per dwelling unit used as a single housekeeping unit."
Maybe, I still don't know how we would ever enforce any of that.
Well, I mean, I guess from my perspective, it's very generalized. And to me, it takes away from the whole definition of a family. And that's why I kind of like that better.
Right. Yeah, I can see your point on that. And I mean, from staff's perspective, I mean, do you have strong feelings on this? Is this, I mean, is this definition of family something you feel certainly should be part of the code? Is it, I mean, is it, I guess my question is whether it's truly protecting neighborhood character as well.
Yeah. I don't, from a staff's perspective, I don't have, we don't have strong feelings on whether the number's five, or six, or three. I think, I think any number is somewhat arbitrary. I also don't, wouldn't oppose moving in the direction of some other communities and eliminating the number altogether. I do think, though, that Planning Commission had some concern in when they talked through this proposed change, even going from three to five, that there could be some impacts on neighborhood character. Parking, traffic, noise, those kinds of things. And so I think, I think that would probably be a conversation I'd want to take back to Planning Commission and see, you know, if there was something else we could do in the code to offset those concerns. I also know that in some other communities, they have rental housing programs where they license rental housing for certain numbers of people, have inspections, and, you know, have an enforcement mechanism. So when councilperson Sloop mentioned the veil example, to me, that's sort of, my perspective on that is that it's taking the definition of family, which I don't believe in our case was intended to address capacity and safety. And it's trying to bake in some of those occupancy limits. And in doing so, with our current code, we don't have a mechanism to effectively enforce that. So I don't know that that, I wouldn't be in favor of moving in that direction without making sure we had some mechanism in place to enforce.
But there's not enforcement now with how it's written. So I mean, I guess that's where I'm like, which one's better?
Doesn't matter.
Right. I mean, I guess that's where I'm looking at it. If we're going to do this, I'd like to do it once and know that maybe in the future we'll have enforcement action. But I don't know, that's where I was.
Rebecca, I want to ask, and it might be a dumb question, but how are we addressing occupancy and safety then? Like, let's say there's a family of 50 living in a house together. Do we just let that go because there's nothing regulating that?
I believe that's correct.
Unless we get complaints. I was just going to say. We operate on a complaint basis.
But there are still occupancy limits. But there are still occupancy limits based on the building code, right? Technically?
I really wish our building official was still here to address that thoroughly, but the occupancy, for residential, especially single family duplex residential, we do not regulate occupancy through the building code in that fashion. So we are not telling people when they own and live in, or even when they, or even rent if they're related, we're not, we're not regulating how many people can occupy and live in that unit.
Ski Corps came forward with the request to move that number to six, and maybe I missed it, but I'm looking at the Planning Commission conversation, it's like somebody brought it up and then the conversation went in a different direction. So was there a robust discussion around five versus six, or?
Well, I think that the discussion is captured in the minutes. I don't, I don't think, again, from a staff's perspective, I don't think there's probably much of a difference between five or six. If you may remember, a couple of years ago, I think we brought forward a similar amendment to move from, in multiple family, to move it from five to six. There seemed to be some concern on Planning Commission that there's the potential for impacts that we don't have another means to mitigate, and that seemed to be a pretty significant concern. From a staff's perspective, I don't share that concern.
Other questions for Rebecca on item six? No? Okay. Any public comment on agenda item six? Please step forward, give us your name and address. We'll give you three minutes.
Bill Jameson Burgess Creek wrote, "This is why I came down. This proposal ought to be tabled or sent back to planning. You've heard, the issue is not health and safety. What the hell are you doing? Why aren't you regulating health and safety? The building code addresses occupancy. Why doesn't your code complement that? And in residential units, I believe you can check with your building officials, I think it's 200 square foot. If you want a dormitory, you can have 50 square feet, I think. But the idea that you can pack 20 people in a one-bedroom apartment is crazy. So this isn't ready for primetime as presented. You're talking about short-term rentals and making a occupancy limit apply to them, and the proposal is 200 square feet. Why, on God's green earth, wouldn't you make the same requirement for all dwelling units, whether they're single family, multifamily, or whatever? Unless they conform with some other building classification under the Uniform Building Code that would give them higher density. So I would urge you to send this back to planning and have them address both the occupancy issue and the number, because it should be a not to exceed what's permitted under the Uniform Building Code. I know some people want more than what the Uniform Building Code requires, but I haven't heard any persuasive argument presented on health and safety that hasn't been considered when the Uniform Building Code was adopted. So what puts you in a better position to change those guidelines in the Uniform Building Code? Thank you.
Thank you. And I see a hand up on Zoom from Ryan Stone. Ryan, did you have a comment on this agenda item?
Yes, Ryan Stone, Valverde Circle. I would just like to speak up and say as an employer within Route County and Steamboat Springs, I'm in full support of anything that increases access to affordable housing and housing in general. So just wanted to make a simple statement there.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Anybody else here for public comment on agenda item six?
Hi, Jason Peaslee, Director of the Infalary Housing Authority. We don't necessarily have a preference on what the number is. I tend to gravitate towards your why do we even have it sort of comment. With the life safety issues are obviously really important to us. We think that there should be some minimum standard. We don't know exactly what that is, but we do think there should be a minimum standard. And whether we like it or not, overcrowding happens in this community in various housing types, and it's a product of our lack of supply and the fact that you are not able to survive outside of a dwelling unit in the winter. And so, you know, given the current circumstances that we're in, you know, anything's going to help, and it doesn't need to be, this is what we're going to adopt for the next 21 years. It can be an interim step that is then a little more thoroughly vetted and dealt with some of these other issues that have been talked about. But, you know, as we go into this next ski season, we've got a lot of people looking for, or a lot of businesses looking for employees, a lot of employees looking for housing, and that housing is very limited. And so to the extent that we can expand the ability for units to take on more people that the market will bear, that could be a help to our sort of current crisis situation. So that's my two cents on this.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else for public comment on agenda item six? Nobody else? Okay, I'll close public comment. So counsel, any follow-up questions? Ready for discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've been kind of madly looking for the information about what the Route County building standard is, and I can't find it.
I was.
But I also was wondering, too, with like the vacation home rental situation, we do have a minimum standard for that in a square footage basis.
We do. It's included in the VHR use standards, and that's a permitted use. It requires a limited use permit, and it's also a lodging use. So it's a little bit different than a residence in terms of how it's being used.
And it is what, 200 square foot per person, or is it?
Right. One, I think it's one occupant for every 200 square feet, and I believe that's net floor area, so we, it excludes some areas of the home. And in terms of the building codes, the IRC, which is the International Residential Code that is used for single family and duplex homes, from what I understand from Todd Carr, we do not issue certificates of occupancy, and we do not, that include an occupancy load. So we do not restrict how many people can live in a single family home. We're not in the business of telling people how many children they can have and how many people they can have living with them, in their, in their family.
Kathy, you got something?
Since Rebecca's at the podium, if we go in the direction that the Planning Commission and the staff are recommending, this does not override any health and safety issue that the building code, I mean, we are, we are still abiding by.
Subject to.
Subject to is a better, better word. Subject to the International Building Code, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
On all occupancy and life safety issues.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Anything else?
But if we're going that route, if we're still subject to it, who's the enforcement? I mean, or is it truly going to be?
Complaint driven.
I mean, is the sheriff, or is the sheriff or the police supposed to go, excuse me, you've got too many people in your house?
We're not running checks on this.
We don't.
We don't have the capacity for that.
It's all complaint driven.
So, right. So if somebody calls and says there's 20 people living in that one house, the police are supposed to know the building code?
We have a code enforcement officer.
Well, that's happened a lot. I mean, well, I don't know, there was one in my neighborhood that was a lot of people living in there, and they had to constantly go over there and house them.
But that's because the code written like it is now. I mean.
No, they had like 15 people in there. So it was, you know, yeah, sure.
More than five.
It was unbelievable.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Rebecca while she's up there?
District three has all the fun with housing.
I have a question. As we are looking to do something with some sort of a fee for short-term rentals or VR, you know, whatever, in the near future, and we have to stay revenue neutral when we do a fee, Dan, is it possible that that fee could cover code enforcement not only for short-term rentals, but for private homes that are not in the short-term rental pool as well? So that we have the proper enforcement or code enforcement officer, officers in place to handle complaints so they can be taken care of in a timely manner?
So there has to be a connection between the fee and the service rendered, and based on the hypothetical you just presented, I have a hard time seeing the connection between the VHR use and inspections of single-family homes that are not being used for that purpose.
Okay. All right, thanks. And we're not Big Brother. You know, we can't just walk into people's homes arbitrarily.
I will say, we do get complaints about these occupancy issues from time to time. I've handled four or five in the time I'm here, and it's very difficult to prove who's living where, who's a visitor, and so forth. But we've also had instances where, you know, people have advertised their intentions to violate this rule in the newspaper, and having the rules helpful, certainly very helpful in that circumstance.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Not? I'll look for discussion and emotion.
I guess my head's really where you started, Jason, which is, to me, the one and only concern I have is health and safety.
Yep.
And so, you know, I guess it's very concerning to me. I get that we're not in the business to tell people how many kids they have when they're unrelated adults, and there can be concerns about labor trafficking and things like that. I think it is important to have some sort of standard on how many people can be residing in one location. So I guess in my head, I'm kind of leaning towards no number more, how many people per square feet is more appropriate.
Yeah. I mean, veil was a little different, but.
That was a per bedroom.
Yeah, I kind of like that one.
Yeah.
Two per bedroom. I like that a lot.
I'm unclear on the veil, is it, it's two per bedroom plus an additional two?
Plus an additional two.
So you can have a three-bedroom house, and you got two people crashing on the couch and three bedrooms, or maybe five people on the couch because they're not sharing bedrooms?
Big couch.
Big couch.
Well, it's, yeah, so, I mean, it's families is one line, and then the other one is a group of unrelated persons not to exceed two persons per bedroom plus an additional two persons per dwelling unit.
The plus an additional is where I get a little hung up.
Well, there could be a loft that's not considered a bedroom.
Or a pullout couch.
Being used as a bedroom.
There are illegal lofts also, and, you know, like, I've seen them actually in some of the condos and condo land, and I don't know, I just.
Or it's three people per room, which ski resort is doing in.
So I kind of feel like we're going down a rabbit hole here, so, I mean, the question is what do we want to regulate? So, Michael?
I just, I, I'm not sold that we even need to have this in the code anymore as it is. I don't know why definition of family, and it seems like in this housing crisis that we are, that we're throwing down some regulations. So I need someone to sell me on why we even need to keep this.
I like the square footage. I think we need to keep it like Liesel said, because there are situational circumstances where we need to have some sort of enforcement arm to this and realize that it is necessary, albeit.
You just said there's no enforcement.
Well, apparently I was told that if somebody complains, there is. So I'm going to go with that.
So let me introduce a different element for you.
Okay, cool.
We don't really talk about the low wages that this town has when we talk about affordable housing very much, like practically not at all, to be honest with you. And so when you look at some of the major employers who are providing housing as a wage, but it really isn't considered a wage because employees kind of pay it, my question is, like, what is the living standard that we think people should be able to get away with providing in exchange for these employees paying for it? I mean, so, you know, I'm going to go live with, like.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, like, do we really want to create a situation in which employers can pay people low wages and require them to live on top of their neighbors?
Sardine.
And pay for it? I mean, that's the part that is, it's not free. It's not a full-on perk.
But at the same time, who are we to say that people aren't choosing that? I mean, people are choosing to come here to work.
I get it.
They're choosing to live in those, those units. They can live wherever they want. They're not required to be there.
Well, not, not really, because they're into more housing.
They're also choosing to come here. I mean, a lot of you, what you were talking about are seasonal workers that are choosing to come to Steamboat, right? So they, it's hard for me, and I go back and forth a lot because I'm like, what kind of living is that? But people are choosing it, right? And, and who are we to sit there and regulate it in that way? Unless it's, unless it's health and safety. If it's health and safety, then to me, it's like we do have a duty at that point.
That's what the building code does.
But it doesn't. There's no occupancy at all standard, we just heard. So that's where I'm, that would be my only concern.
I would rather see it in the building code than in ours.
Well, but, it's not what we're talking about tonight.
I don't think that that's fair, because, again, you're looking at how are you enforcing a building code as opposed to a planning or a city, I don't, an ordinance?
Well, I mean, Rob Perlman brought up something in one of the work sessions that we talked about when it came to this, and it was basically that the housing of Ski Corps, let's just talk about the ponds, and they have, you know, they're monthly for those people renting a bed, let's just call it a bed, right? Because they're renting maybe two beds or three beds in a, in a room, and they're choosing to stay there, and it's cheaper than the market rate. He says the challenge is they can't get people out of there because it's so cheap. So people want to live in Steamboat, you talk about affordable housing, and yet they're going to stay in Ski Corps as long as they can because they can get a room for $450 a bed, right?
They're making $13 an hour.
As they're making, and that's, but that's their choice. I'm not going to sit there and regulate that too much. But my point is that when they're sitting there with the, and one of the problems that that they, the Ski Corps would have is how do you get people out? Because then they, they don't live here anymore, they don't work for Ski Corps anymore, and now they can't sure-as-heck find a place for $450 a month, right? So there is a problem with that aspect of it, like they need to raise their, their cost of living.
Which should be contractual with Ski Corps. If you're not working for Ski Corps, you don't get to live in.
That's, that's where the public or the private entity has that control.
Right. So why is this our problem?
Let the private, let them decide. If these employees don't want to pay and live in a place that's like sardine cans, then they don't work for them. I mean, the only, that's, I see it more as an affordable housing issue right now, and I'm still not sold on the family being a detriment to, I mean, the only, I mean, two unrelated persons living together with any children, and then it says, but not more than one on top of that. And so I look at all these things in alternative one, and I think all of them should be just stitched. I, that's my opinion.
I've got a, got two, two more questions that have come up. So the dormitory situation is different because there's less square footage per person. So like in the case of Ski Corps, is that considered a dormitory? Is that considered?
No.
Not a dormitory? Okay. So that was just one of the questions, and now I forgot the other one. Oh, God.
Did you have a comment, Kathy?
Yeah, I do. I think we are way.
Into the weeds?
Into the weeds in terms of what the proposal is, and I think we either vote it up, vote it down. If we change it tonight, I think we send it back to Planning Commission. You remand it. I think this is a, this shouldn't be, I'm going to disagree with you, Michael, as far as affordable housing issue. This is a code issue, and this is something that's been broken, I think, in our code, and we either bring it up to what we think is a reasonable standard, or we get rid of the standard. And if we're going to do that, then you remand it back.
I remembered my question.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and it was your remark of reasonable standard, because I think, you know, when the Housing Authority does their development projects, I mean, you're trying to provide a reasonable standard of living for people that is affordable. So you said you didn't know necessarily what the definition of, you know, the square footage is, but you've got to know the size of the units and square footage and divided by how many people are in there. So could you give us a ballpark maximum square footage of what you guys are doing at your projects? Or maybe one of you guys who are on the board?
I thought you do it by income, and then you determine by income how many people can be in that unit, and they have to be related.
I mean, I'm, I'm asking if you have a two-bedroom place, how many people can be in that unit? And what is the square footage of that unit?
Go ahead.
On the spot.
You have an idea?
I have no idea. I was thinking about making up an answer, but I don't. I honestly don't know the, the specific property-based regulation. So each, each property that we have, the USDA has their own standards, the tax credit program has a different standard, and they may be similar, I don't, I don't know, because I'm dealing with that on a day-to-day basis, so I can't tell you the answer. We can look it up and let you know.
I just feel like that's the kind of information that would be useful to us, because we are struggling with what is a reasonable standard of living, and, you know, we don't have a square footage thing. I mean, I lived in a town home, you know, it was a two-bedroom, two and a half bath, and I'll say if I were in there with six people, that would be way too much. I mean, four people, maybe, and that's about 1,100 square feet. I mean, the two- I mean, the 200 square foot per person is kind of a reasonable standard in some ways.
It really is.
See, I like the hundred.
I like the Vale one.
Know what I did? I know on my, on my tiny house project.
Lex Vale.
So, I mean, I'm wondering, I mean, it sounds like we, we all have some concerns with how it's written now, and, and I'm wondering, just as an interim step, if we think about adopting this as it's written, and then, as Kathy said, remand it back to Planning for further kind of deliberation on some of the points that we've been talking about.
My only concern is that this has taken five years to get here.
Exactly.
And I actually agree with Michael, I agree with you both, I think it's an issue that needed to be fixed. I also do think goes towards affordable housing that could be used right now. So if we're only doing it to five, but we know that could actually be more helpful with six or more.
Right.
Are we just prolonging our, our ways to help?
No, I think we'd still be adopting this, or, and we could, maybe we change it to six.
Right.
Maybe we change it to six, I'm, I'm open to that discussion, but, yeah, I don't think we're saying we kick this entire, I say we would approve this, whether it's five or six, but then also, I, I, I just, I still have some concerns about even regulating family in, in any way. I just think it's, it's pretty arbitrary. I'm sorry.
Even with occupancy.
No, I would want, I'm fine with doing occupancy and life safety issues, but that's not what this does.
So this exact same group was the group that basically, when they came forward and said, we want to have six instead of five, we said no.
Well, we, we said two things, one, we're not going to do it just for you, like this isn't a Ski Corps rule that we're going to change, this needs to be something we actually look at to change for the community, if it's best. And so that's actually why it went to Planning Commission and through this process. I also will say, I remember at that time saying, I think that's despicable to have six people in a two bedroom apartment.
And I, I do recall a lot of public comments saying, do not do this.
Right, but I also, we have rights, change our mind.
How many more years ago was that?
It was over two years ago.
Yeah. I would like, I would make a motion, I'm going to pull this thing forward. I'm going to make a motion to change the definition of family to allow up to six unrelated people living together in a dwelling unit regardless of the unit type, allow for one unrelated person to live with a family of related people, or with two unrelated people and their children, and change the term domestic servant to domestic worker.
Second. That's a motion by Crosson and a second by Baccino. Other discussion, go ahead.
I'm not going to support this, because I truly believe that it should be more of a, a Vale type of situation or a per square foot. I don't think that this is, I think it should be remanded back down to Planning to have further conversation about other options other than this.
Okay.
Well, so my comment on that would be, I appreciate what whoever it was that said, might have been Jason, let's move forward with this, and then my next comment to us to see whether we're in agreement is to remand, to have them go back and review this again within six months, bring something back to us.
This would be temporary.
Kind of like, it's, it's in place for now, but to ask the Planning Department to come back with more information and everything, because if we wait six months, it's going to take another year, and like you said, it's been five years in the making, let's do something, and then let's ask for more information, figure something else out in the very near future.
So should we amend the motion to remand back to Planning as well, or?
Well, that would be just separate direction.
Yeah.
So what we really struggled with was occupancy and square footage, and is that an appropriate measure?
Specifically?
Yeah, specifically occupancy, and, and so I guess my question would be, why give it six months? I mean, isn't it possible that Rebecca and maybe Jason, looking at some of the models that they've put forward, could bring back some ideas of what is reasonable in terms of square footage?
Well, I know they're also working very heavily on short term rentals as we speak, on a very tight timeline. I've heard something about that.
And I just, I appreciate what Jason said to us about going into this winter season and how difficult it's going to be for people. And not, this isn't the end hall at all.
So I'm not going to support the motion. I obviously am supportive of changing the word servant and taking that out, that's obvious. But, you know, I think what we're doing here is subsidizing low wage employers and allowing for them to continue to basically, in some ways, as you described, kind of hamstring their employees. I mean, they don't have options to look for other housing, it's not as though people are comparing a $450 unit at the ponds to what? I mean, you cannot get anything in this town for a reasonable amount of money, and if the wages were actually commensurate with the work, people might be able to afford to live here.
Okay, other discussion on the motion? Kathy, you have something?
I'm going to be supporting the motion.
Okay.
I, I just have to say is that, I mean, I appreciate, Sonia, that, but we have a, a housing shortage for our service industry, plain and simple. And to me, this is something we can do in policy right now, not building some structure that we need to build, not, not public, private partnership to build something three years from now. But we have a crisis right now with housing in our community. And if people are rule followers, they will not break the rule. So let's raise the rule and change the rule so that people cannot break it, and we can have more available housing. That, to me, is the only reason why I think we should do this, because we can always come back and change it once we find out that it turns into an occupy, occupancy issue, and things are going wrong, and there's too many parties going on in these places, whatever happens. The reality is, we had a housing shortage last year, we're going to have a housing shortage this year, and dang it, Mr. Peaslee can't build them fast enough. Okay? So what are we going to do? This is something we can do right now for this season.
Okay. Liesel, any comments?
I, I'm going to support the motion, I'm worried about the occupancy limits with even six, because you could have a very small studio that six would be totally inappropriate for, so I think, but knowing that this is a short term fix with a better solution, hopefully in six months, I will support it.
Yeah, I, I think I'd feel more comfortable, since this is an interim step, just going to five right now, so that's my only hesitation. So I'll not support the motion, but I'm, I'm in, I'm in support of the concept, and I definitely want to see us keep looking at this. So I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, that carries four to three, with Slope, Lacy, and Macy's opposed. All right, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, next up is item eight, I pulled this one.
Aren't we supposed, aren't we going to start talking, saying, giving direction to her to?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
You get your direction.
I thought that was clear, but I think, I think we do want Planning Commission to look at this again, and it sounds like we'd like, as a group, with occupancy and life safety being the focus, I think is what I heard, as opposed to family and who's, who's living there and what their relationships are. I think that's what I heard. Is that right?
And we want to see it within six months.
Right.
No, it's not funny.
It's the royal we, some, some of us, we, right? Okay, all right. Rebecca, did you have any questions on that? Did you want some clarity? We're always so clear for you, I know.
I would really appreciate clarity on the timeframe.
Okay.
So I know how to prioritize our workload.
Yep. I think short term rentals is number one, is, is what I've heard from this group.
Absolutely.
You know, let's make it, well, it might make a lot of sense, it's actually for some certainty through the ski season and just make it next April.
Right, same time next year.
That makes some sense.
Some time, too, to focus on the short term rentals, which I do think is the priority.
Okay. So shoot for spring of next year on this one.
Does this pass a first reading, and then it's going to come back in April?
No, no, the second reading's going to come back still, we're, we're doing the reading, the, the ordinance is moving ahead with the six, as it was just approved. But as far as the Planning Commission continuing their work, we're just asking them to go back and look at this from the, see if we might think about, for a long term solution, changing this and focusing on occupancy and life safety issues as opposed to relationships and numbers.
Got it.
In March.
In March.
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 2022.
And I will see if I can have Todd Carr here for second reading, so he can address definitively the questions with regard to occupancy. And I will say that when this comes back next year, and what we'll work with Planning Commission on is how to, one, how to address safety and occupancy concerns, and where those regulations belong in the code, and then how we would enforce them.
Perfect.
Because from a staff's perspective, as we know, the definition of family is difficult to enforce as it is, I don't believe that the occupancy limits belong there, and I would want to make sure if we are trying to address safety concerns, that we are setting ourselves up with clearly enforceable regulations.
Right.
If it's in the building code, I think as long as the concern is being addressed.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you for that direction.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
All right. Okay, so that brings us to item eight, which I pulled this one because I wanted to disclose that I've, I helped the former owners of this property sell this property to the Housing Authority. So that, that transaction closed in April, there's no further financial interest or, or anything related to, to the property, so I don't think I need to step down, there's no financial relationship, it closed in April, so I just wanted to disclose that. I don't have any affiliation with the Housing Authority as far as assisting them, so.
I think that's fine.
Okay, all right.
And I will say, I did ask John Snyder this morning a bunch of questions regarding the traffic plan, because there was a lot of comment through Planning Commission regarding the traffic study. He answered all of my questions thoroughly, and I, if you all know me, feel very comfortable with the traffic study as it stands. He is still waiting for C dot, but it's on a higher level answer, so I'm good.
Okay.
On this one.
All right, very good. Counsel, did anybody have any questions on item eight? Okay, is anybody here for public comment on Agenda Item Eight? I think there might be some people online, anybody here to make comment on the Housing Authority project? I see a hand up from Go Rebs, I'm guessing that's not your name.
Hey, good evening, my name is Henry Skelton, I'm the President of Sundance Creek West Homeowners Association. I have an old computer, and I'm glad you got it right. I'm from the University of Mississippi, so it's Go Rebs.
There it is.
The, the project next door moves forward, and I know you guys aren't supposed to answer questions, but in light of what you just did with Agenda Item Number Six, and Jason can, can email me this answer, he has my email, how many people now are going to be allowed to live in two and three bedroom affordable housing units? And how does that square with the number of parking spaces that have been allotted to each space? Obviously, the, the, the project next door is not going to be ready for another year and a half probably, if everything goes according to plan, but I would be interested to hear from you, Jason, about how many people are going to be allowed to, to live in these units. Secondly, I hope Counsel has taken some time to read our comments that we submitted to you guys. I just heard one of the members speak about traffic, that is a huge issue for us, you know, that traffic study, I think, is dated or, or terminated about the time it'll be ready to rent, which was December 31, 2022. As you know, Angler's Drive is a two lane road with no shoulder, there's one entrance, one exit to this complex, we are really afraid that there's going to be a queue up problem, not only on 40, but trying to get into and out of the, the new project. Also dates back to the Marriott at Planning, well, we were told there would be a roundabout, and then at Planning, Ben Bell told us that was in the five year project, and that, that roundabout would be at Rolling Stone and Pine Grove. So really, we're not going to get any relief from anybody from anywhere. At the very least, we thought a turn lane would be appropriate on Anglers. So traffic is, is one of our biggest concerns, obviously in the density of, of this housing project going up next door to us, this will be the first project that is adjacent to a, a neighborhood, Sundance Creek West and Sundance Creek, obviously Angler's Retreat, and then you have several homes up the road. So that said, Jason has done a pretty good job, I say pretty good, real good job of listening to our concerns, addressing our concerns, so I really have no complaints there. But I, I do, I do encourage Counsel and Planning to think about traffic, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, I, I get it, but it's, it's worris, worrisome to me. And then lastly, you know, I keep hearing housing crisis, and, and I was once an employer, and I know it, sometimes it's hard to find good employees, and especially in the market we're in right now. But I would encourage Counsel to, to, to listen to Joe Kabuti, who spoke first, and to also read and reread the editorial that was written on the pilot from Scott Weddle, very good comments about the housing crisis and how to address it, and, and certainly maybe not with a tax increase. So thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else here for public comment on Agenda Item Eight? Anybody else online for that? Okay, looks like none and nobody in here. So I'll close public comment on Agenda Item Eight. Any other, so as a follow up, I'm not sure if, I see Toby's in the back, I know Jason, I see you're here as well, obviously. Is there any, do we have any responses to provide? I know you, you checked on some of these traffic questions, but would, would Toby, you or Jason, would you be able to address any of these public comments that were raised as far as occupancy in, in these units, or traffic safety, or any issues like that?
Jason Peaslee, Executive Director of the Valley Housing Authority, I'm going to have to look into what the occupancy limits are for the low income housing tax credit projects, I don't know that answer, so I'll be able to get, get back with you on, on that. If, if my recollection serves me, it's probably more restrictive than the 200 square feet, I mean, these units are much larger than that, so I would think. The 200 square foot threshold is probably lower than the bar that's set by the, the federal government, so I'll, I'll double check that, follow back up with, with Henry and also with you, with you all. As it relates to the traffic concerns, we, you know, we, obviously we did the traffic study that was scoped out by the, the Engineering Department here, didn't warrant any improvements outside of a contribution to that future roundabout that Henry mentioned at Pine Grove and Rolling Stone. And so, you know, we, we actually did make some changes to our design because that kind of Starbucks McDonald's intersection is a bit of a mess to begin with. We actually aren't accessing through that anymore, so that we don't add any additional traffic to that already sort of unideal situation there. So we've, we've tried to address these things as best we can, and, and amended our, our access design and traffic study to reflect those changes, and I think it made a positive impact on the traffic situation there.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? Alpenglow only has one entrance, one exit, correct?
It has two.
It does have two?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, down past, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and it's really a function of, there's, there's internal maneuvering space at the, at the Angler's 400 site for fire apparatus to move around, in the event that they need to fight a fire, they can, they can get to every spot of the building.
Okay.
Okay, any other follow up questions or discussion on this one?
Well, he brought up a turn lane, and obviously that's not in the plan, is that something that was reviewed through the whole traffic study, or Heather, did you talk to about that today?
Turn lane, oh, on 40?
Yeah. So John Reed told me that when they've done their own studies, that they don't believe that it would actually, well, why doesn't Ben answer this?
Yeah, Ben, why don't you address that issue?
I'm not going to talk about this. He, I did ask that question, but let's ask the expert.
City engineer, I'm glad I got a chance to come down and speak, because two weeks after my wife gave birth, it'd be too bad to come down and not say something. I apologize if I say anything out of line, because I'm not thinking clearly.
We're sleeping.
Oh, yeah, right. Gosh, there's coffee. No auxiliary lanes were a part of the evaluation in the traffic study. There weren't any warranted for turning into or out of the development itself. There was a comment that was provided that it would be beneficial to have an auxiliary acceleration lane off of 40, to get onto 40. However, that has a lot of impact to character. And oftentimes, we work with C dot to actually avoid some of those auxiliary lanes that would widen our intersections even more than they already are.
Since you're standing up there already, are sidewalks going to be finally put on Anglers?
Yes, and there and there was a comment earlier from the public about lack of shoulders. The project is dedicating additional easement so that Anglers can be widened at some point in the future in a more kind of holistic approach to improvement to Anglers.
And sidewalks.
Sidewalks are included in the project. They're actually connecting the one missing link on that. What is that, the north side of of Anglers? Okay. And I believe putting in a pedestrian crossing mid block to be able to get people over to the Sundance Plaza area.
Thanks for showing up tonight.
Yeah.
Congratulations. All right, any other questions or are we ready for discussion and a motion? Sounds like discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Eight.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Crossan and a second by Pacino. Any other discussion on the motion? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, passes seven zero. Thanks for coming out tonight. All right, and Heather, you pulled Agenda Item 13.
I did. The only reason why I pulled it is there's some language in there. Let me get to it. I think the last part is 75% of meetings each year and a majority of council members shall attend. So I just wrote in my notes, what happens if you don't make the 75% of the meetings? And what happens if the majority doesn't attend in person for a meeting? Is that meeting then canceled or does this make sense?
What page are you on?
I'm on 13.4. The last paragraph of our adopted new thing. I I just didn't like.
So you want to know about the consequences?
Well, I just, I don't, I want to know what happens if we don't have a majority in attendance. Say we all are somewhere else.
We don't have a quorum and.
Well, if we're all on Zoom land, we have a quorum still, but we're not here. Does that make it a?
We're not doing signups right now, so we wouldn't even know.
Right, so that's where I'm like, do we not have a meeting then? So that's.
Want to address this, Dan?
Well, I don't really have a good answer for that. The direction we got on this point at the last meeting was a little squishy. One thing you could do is with respect to the 75% is we just keep track of those numbers and that could kind of be a political issue for your voters to decide whether or not you're if you're working hard enough. We can, we can do this.
Being here means you're working harder than being at home. Okay.
Same thing with the majority. I mean, you know, you could decide that you're just not going to hold the meeting if you can't get a majority of people present in in person. You know, my view kind of is that this is all sort of aspirational. And, you know, if you're present in Zoom land, you're present. But if you want to go with a stricter rule than that.
I would say I would change the wording to say council members' goal would be to attend in person no less than 75%. Our goal would be to be here more than at home or somewhere else.
I am concerned, though, if we show up and one person's in here, and that's.
I guess that's where I'm, I don't, I don't have an issue. I don't, I think it's more of a hindrance on Julie to start doodle pulling us to see if we're going to show up every single week. And what if things happen? I mean, I could have had a broken foot tonight. I mean, thankfully, I don't. So it's like, I wouldn't have been here. What if nobody else showed up too? So from my perspective, I don't like the last sentence of the majority of council members in in here, but that's that's just me. I think there, if we are zooming and we're doing it legally with our face showing on Zoom, then I don't believe there should be this, like, there has to be four people here to have a meeting situation.
Well, the reason that we were looking at this is because we wanted to be consistent with our boards and commissions, where we kind of do have this attendance requirement slash request. And I mean, the consequences of it in those cases are what Dan says. You know, when they come to reapply and they haven't been attending meetings, then they don't get reappointed.
Well, the consequences for us is we don't get reelected.
I mean, I guess what I would say is really, I'm not sure. I believe that that is going to be, I mean, I don't think that that's an enforcement mechanism that like, if I just stop showing up to meetings, people won't reelect me. I mean, I don't, I don't know about that. I think that if we're going to really care about whether or not people are here in person, we need to have some form of of consequence for not attending. And maybe that means you don't get to go to the next meeting either. I don't know what it is, but like, I mean, getting voted out.
Dinner for you.
I'm sorry, getting voted out is like, I don't think that that's going to be top of mind for voters when we have bigger issues if you attended 74% of the meetings, but. So anyway.
Well, that's where I am with it. It's I'm 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 struggling with.
The in person part.
The in person part. And then if if there are only three for some odd reason, and we've got four on Zoom, do we not have a meeting that night?
Why don't you put a period after, or take out the last after the word and a majority of council shall attend? Just say that council members shall attend at 75% of the meetings.
I'm okay with that.
I feel okay, though, if all of a sudden one night, none of us show up and we have community members that come in and all of us are just up here on a computer. Like, I just, I'm not sure that that's really doing us best for our community either.
Yeah.
Well, I think the goal is for us all to show up. I mean.
I'm just wondering if it's on us to say you have to notify Julie if you're not going to be here. And once she gets to three, she notifies us.
Yeah.
Forty three people out.
That's that sounds good. And that can be just an internal agreement that we make right up here. It doesn't have to be part of this resolution. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like it, I'd like us to try to be in person as much as possible.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
That's kind of why I like the way it's written.
I just wanted to know the consequences.
It's tongue lashing.
The bigger issue, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I've seen some pretty big things decided with like four, five people. And then and then you get a.
I mean, we can, we have can have conversation. We see who's in the audience. It's it's a much better environment for us to be in when we're in person.
It is, but I think it also gives some flexibility to people, which is great. And honestly, if somebody's sick, I would prefer they sit at home.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I just, I want to make sure that there's never a time when all of a sudden, nobody's here.
Okay, so I agree with Kathy. Let's move this, I move that we move this forward with cutting the sentence at ending at each year and not including the language that says and the majority of council members shall attend in person at every council meeting.
We're just making an agreement that we're.
Yeah.
If we're not showing up.
Okay, so that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Macy's and a second by Sloop. Any other discussion on the motion?
The internal agreement is that we notify Julie if we're not going to make it so that she knows if we do not have, if we have like four people or two people or whatever it's going to be.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, anyone opposed? All right.
This is not for the motion, but just a thought.
Seven zero.
To have that Excel spreadsheet. That's really easy to just check in on, and then it's not too much on anybody. It's just up to us.
Yeah.
Our names on there. But for planning purposes, too, it's also nice that we can look and see.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion on that one? Are we ready for public hearings? Well, let's move on to public hearings. That takes us to Agenda Item 16. This is second reading of an ordinance, Fourth Supplemental Budget Appropriation of 2021. And Kim Weber will introduce this one for us.
Good evening. Kim Weber, Finance Director. So this is the Fourth Supplemental Budget Appropriation. And there it's about $200,000 use of reserves spread across different funds. About half of that is due to the Excel power cost adjustment. It is spread across different funds, as I already said. And then there's a portion of it, about $27,000, that is for Tim Borden. You guys discussed that at a previous council meeting to pay him for fireworks that we didn't use in the past. There's also a use of fleet reserves. And about half of that is due to the increasing in cost to replace six scheduled vehicles. And then the other half is to purchase an electric vehicle in advance. And the rest is just recognizing additional revenues and the expenditures that go along with that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or the directors can as well.
Okay, any questions? No questions? Any public comment on Agenda Item 16? Anybody here for that? Guessing you're not here for public comment, Angela. I know. All right, I'll close public comment and counsel will look for a motion.
Move to approve Item 16.
Motion by Meyer, second by Crossan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. And Agenda Item 17, Second Reading of an Ordinance, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Two of the Steamboat Springs Revised Municipal Code by clarifying the role of the Golf Management Committee, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And Angela?
Good evening, Council. Angela Cosby, Parks and Recreation Director. Again, Haymaker, the property of Haymaker Golf Course was purchased in 1993. And at that time, the Golf Management Committee was established. And then Haymaker opened in 1997. And the duties of the golf professional at the time were under those of a concessionaire. And the Golf Management Committee oversaw that concessionaire. In 2017, that agreement with the concessionaire ended and the city hired the Golf Management Pro Duties as a city employee. Therefore, it conflicted with the Golf Management Committee's roles and responsibilities in the ordinance. So this is essentially homework, cleaning that up to ensure that we don't have volunteer committee members overseeing city staff. This, all of these ordinance revisions were reviewed by Gary, Dan, myself, and Golf Management Committee over the course of a total of five different meetings with Golf Management Committee. Actually, we, since then, we've met one more time and we talked about it again just to make sure all of our members were in agreeance. And the Golf Management Committee unanimously voted in support of these changes. In your packet, there is a redline edited version to illustrate the changes as well as a clean copy. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions for Angela? Yeah, go ahead.
Unrelated topic, river closures?
I'm. So with the forecast, sorry, I'm changing my brain real quick. With the rain we received, it did help us out for a few days. The river did hit 75 degrees today. It did not yesterday. We are predicting it will hit 75 tomorrow, and in which case, I will be authorizing a closure starting at 12:01 a.m. Thursday. There's, Mike Lane's already working on press releases and the team's working in that direction.
Sorry to change the subject, but that's an important thing to the community. For those who are watching at home.
It is, it's being monitored daily and we're preparing to close it very soon.
Thank you.
Hey, any questions on the ordinance this time? Okay, no questions? Anybody here for public comment on Agenda Item 17? Anybody here for that? Looks like nobody. So counsel, I'll close public comment and look for a motion on Item 17.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pacino, second by Meyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes unanimously. And Agenda Item 18, Second Reading of an Ordinance, An Ordinance for the Purpose of Submitting to a Vote of the Electors of the City of Steamboat Springs, Colorado, The Question of Whether the City Should Impose a Property Tax at a Rate of Up to Two Mills and Dedicate the Increased Revenue Solely to Offsetting the Cost of Providing Parks and Recreation Services. Dan, did you want to introduce this one?
No, I don't think so that you've.
Do you think we have the point at this at this time?
You've seen this enough times, so I'm going to defer to the public comment.
How many years have we been talking about this, Dan?
One.
Well, this particular one?
How many years have we been talking?
Yeah.
We talk about taxes every, every year.
Okay. All right, any questions for Dan on the ordinance? No questions? Okay, then I'll open up for public comment. Guessing we have some interested parties here. So if you're here to make a comment on Agenda Item 18, step forward. Give us your name and address. We'll give you three minutes.
Good evening, Les Lyman, 1049 Crawford Avenue, Steamboat Springs. I'm the owner of ACZ Laboratories and have some residential and industrial property in West Steamboat Springs that's primarily rental. I understand that the proposal is to start with a modest two mils. I also know that the federal income tax started out at 1%. There's always demand for government to do more, and there's never enough to do all that needs to be done. I served on city council in the 1980s. It was very much the same then. With uncertainty in the near future about increasing taxes on residential property and a general perception of the treatment of commercial property assessments as being unfair with, and with so many assessments and and taxes debruised or districts debruised, it's likely that both residential and commercial property taxes will increase. ACZ has about 60 employees who live and work in Steamboat Springs, with many occupying rental property. You know that housing is the biggest issues that employers face in attempting to hire them. ACZ has interviewed qualified people, have them accept a job offer, and then back out when they cannot afford to even find a place to rent or afford to pay the rent that's being asked. And from a personal standpoint, where I have built a number of residential units in the last two years with no land cost, because I owned I owned the land for 20 years, the the rent, the market rent provided a 3%, a 3% cash on cash return for for residential rental property. ACZ provides laboratory services nationwide and worldwide. Samples are shipped here by UPS and FedEx. Over 50 coolers a day arrive at ACZ. The price that a laboratory can charge for testing is set in a national marketplace. ACZ cannot charge more because the work is being done in a costly place to live. We have 60, approximately 60 employees right now in Steamboat Springs. Steamboat has lost TIC and Smartwool, companies that didn't have to be in Steamboat Springs, like ACZ, in order to do their work. If counsel puts more pressure on rents by approving higher property taxes and the pass through to rentals, to renters, make it even harder for ACZ to hire educated and skilled chemists, IT and administrative people when we offer wages typical of the environmental testing industry, it makes it harder for ACZ to remain a local company.
Les, you've hit your three minutes. If you could please conclude your comments.
Okay, with federal stimulus funds coming to Colorado and Steamboat Springs, the increasing appraised value of real estate, the continued strength and relative stability of sales tax revenue, even in a pandemic, I believe that a new property tax is unnecessary. I ask you to disapprove this new tax. It's a terrible idea.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Weiss, you here for comments? Come on up. Oh, come on, you're in the front row, of course you are.
Just give it to.
Give it to, yeah, we'll pass it around. Yep.
So I kind of agree with Les.
You introduce yourself.
Yes, Bob Weiss, 1625 Mid Valley Drive, Suite 1-82, Boat Springs, Colorado. I kind of agree with Joe Kabuti and Les and the comments they made about what more property tax does in terms of the ability of people to live and particularly a permanent residence, working people and new new residents. But I thought if you're going to do this, you ought to think about doing two things. You remember when you passed the two mils, what was that, two years ago for the fire? I said, please don't debruise this in advance. Okay, because what that does is you 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 say the tax question says, oh, this is going to raise a million seven. Okay, that's based on assessed value for a year and a half ago. Okay? Property values have ballooned in the last six months or a year. That number, if you if you just take the two mils against the assessed value, is going to be probably 50% or more higher than that. Okay, so basically, what you're doing, and I don't think you're doing this sort of maliciously, but you're basically going to the community saying it's going to be a million seven and then you're cashing in on damaging property value increase that we're experiencing now if you debruise in advance. Okay, so I think, I know that's typical, but I don't think you should do it. So if you're going to put this on, you ought to take off the advanced debruising and live with inflation and growth as your limit on how much more property tax you can get. You have to do a temporary mill levy credit if you start collecting too much money. Because otherwise, it's deceptive and you're kind of in the business of cashing in on unreasonable property tax in property value increases. That's number one. Number two is any kind of attacks like this that is not for an essential. Number two is any kind of attacks like this that is not for an essential service, okay? And I'm not dismissing the importance of recreation and housing. In my mind, I'd be, I'd be sunsetted after a reasonable time period. So I've suggested, in the language I've given you, a five-year sunset on this. I think that makes the council and the city more accountable to the voters because you have to come back and get it renewed five years from now. And I think that's worked particularly well with school tax. I think that's made them accountable, they've been very conscious of what they're doing with the money and the attitude of the voters about that. So I would really, if you're going to do this, and I, for sure you don't, but if you do, I think those two things are really important. Don't debruise in advance and put a five, five-year sunset on it.
Thank you. Okay, all right, some more public comment?
Phil Jameson Burgess Creek wrote, "I'll make it simple. No or hell no." This idea was bad last year, pre-pandemic. It's terrible now when you're sitting flush with cash from both your sales tax revenue that are exceeding all expectations, including pre-pandemic, and you're getting three-point plus from the federal government. And for you to claim poverty that you need this money, this year is unrealistic and not palatable. And the idea that, oh, we're not doing anything, we're just going to let the voters decide. Give me a break. You're putting it on the ballot. You don't have to put this on the ballot. There's no requirement for you to put this on the ballot. You're not diversifying your revenue, you're just looking for more revenue. So I want to know who's going to support this and champion this cause. Mr. Lacy, you asked last meeting, you expected a roomful of interested people here that were ready to go for this. If not, you weren't going to support it. I don't see a roomful of people championing this cause. And the city council people that are doing this can only do it in their individual capacity. You're going to be out there real lonely trying to convince the electorate to pass this. So I urge you just to, to vote this down at second reading and shoot it where it belongs in the head. If you're not going to do it, I'll second Mr. Weiss's recommendations. But those are a poor second for what should be done. And this should be put to bed right now. So I urge you to reconsider your support, reaffirm your opposition to this, and maybe one of your fellow councilmen will join you in opposition. But a four-three vote is not a ringing endorsement of a property tax proposal the general electorate to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, come on down. You've done stretching, you can come, come up now.
I'm Sarah Floyd, 3445 Hiawatha Court, and I'm the executive director of the Steamboat Springs Winter Sports Club. I want to thank you for, for considering Parks and Recreation for this. But I agree with my gentlemen friends here, I don't think we're ready right now for this. I had spoken with Michael a bit ago and Robin and a few of you about this and, and Angela and got together with a group of other sports users, soccer, hockey, golf, tennis, lacrosse, ourselves at the Winter Sports Club last week. We all decided that we felt like, instead of coming forth as Jason had asked to support, that we'd really like to form a group that would work together to look at the next year and how we might look at funding for Parks and Recreation. Kathy Cannell's on this with us and we'd like to ask that this not go farther at this point, but that maybe this working group could spend a year or so looking at some creative ways to maybe figure out some funding for Parks and Recreation. It is important, it is important, as you heard earlier tonight with Sports Barn for the youth in our community, but this probably isn't ready right now. It may not be the right time, it may never be the right time, but we'd like to put this group together with maybe a couple of you to, and maybe Angelo, recruit her, to, to talk about how we might do this in a way that would be more successful for a broader group in the community. So our recommendation from all of those sports, and I'm here representing those groups tonight, is to kind of put this on hold and work at it and define it a little bit more clearly and maybe see if it's the right thing in a year and see if it's not, but that's kind of, I'm speaking on behalf of those groups. So thank you for considering those of us who are working with kids and youth and parks and rec and all, but that's kind of our thinking at this point, so.
Right, thanks.
And I think, Michael, did you share this with?
Yeah, I think everyone got that.
That was forwarded to us by the city clerk.
Okay, so, thanks.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else here for public comment on agenda item 18? Anybody else? Nobody online? Oh, one hand. Mr. Skelton, looks like your hand is up again.
Yeah, it's me again, 500 Angler Drive, Henry Skelton. I want to echo the comments, this is a bad idea. It was a bad idea a year ago when, when you guys brought this to the voters. You know, a year ago, the primary function of a city council or any city administration is to provide police and fire protection, but we had to raise taxes to do that. Terrible idea. Do you guys ever consider cutting items? We're giving $800,000 to a $1 million to the Chamber of Commerce to promote tourism and we can't find parking places or get down 40. So I, I don't, I don't get this. I think it'll go down to a ringing defeat. Property owners that have been here, and I've only been here five years, property owners that have been here 30, 40 years and now retired, and they've seen their property values balloon and their tax bill just further increase. So you're punishing the, these folks that literally helped build Steamboat with, with another property tax increase. You guys have got to figure out a way to balance your sales tax and fund the city with, with a property tax, but you got to give us a break here and there. You know, you can't, you guys just got your hands out all the time and you want more, more, more. It's just typical politicians, really, but you know, no, enough is enough. You should not vote to put this on the ballot, nor should it be on the ballot, and if it is, it will be soundly defeated. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else here for public comment on agenda item 18? Nobody else? Okay, then I'll close public comment. Council, discussion? Yeah, go ahead Kathy.
I'll start.
Yeah.
I voted for this at first reading. I haven't, there's only one person out of maybe 25 that I've talked to that would even consider a, a property tax at this time, and that person is not in favor of this proposal. I, I really, I'm going to change my vote, which I rarely do between first and second reading, and I, my primary reason is, and it's been stated, we are, we've gone in 12 months or even 24 months from being in a financial crisis to have substantial fiscal revenue this year. And we're probably going to have, and I think just based on the number of people walking around the streets, revenues are, are up. To go to the voters at this time and say, this is the time to try to get a property tax, I think it fails. And I like Sarah's idea, let's work with, with the, the user groups that could benefit this and let's come up with a better proposal. I, I think, again, we worked very hard and we made the decisions six months ago based on the facts that we had, and I think those facts have changed, and I will not be supporting second reading.
Okay, other discussion?
Yep, Jason, as difficult it is for me to say, no, I won't support it, I will not support it either, for the exact same reasons that Kathy brought forward. For me, we had multiple people come up to us at the farmer's market the last several weeks thanking us for finally doing something with a property tax. But for those folks that came up to say, thank you, we, we need to diversify, we had 10 or 15 fold people saying, please don't do it, or don't do it right now. You know, Kathy and I worked really hard with the fire oversight committee and everything, and I would hope that I would be able to be involved with Sarah and the group over the next year to work forward, to bring something that is, if we choose to bring something that is substantial to the community to support. The only thing I will say to someone's comment about, let the voters decide, in the end, the voters decide, whether it's they vote us in or out of office, whether they vote for a sales tax or not, whether they vote for two mil or one mil for any organization in this community or the city itself, the voters in the end do make the decision for all of us. Sometimes it's about us and sometimes it's about what happens in the city. So I hope that people will understand that this just isn't ready for primetime and hopefully in another year we can come back and say it truly is, or nope, it really is not.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I voted for this and at this point, the house isn't full and this is not ready for primetime. I do want to say, so I, I mean, it's, this is a no, no non-starter, but here's the thing that I want to point out to you guys on council. I've gone through two of our retreat when we get together as council, and the inherent challenge that we have with this is that this is a goal that we have put on Gary's plate for sustainable funding of some kind of other source for our budget. And we need to get that off a goal because I'm tired of this doing laps, talking about how to fund it when sales tax isn't broken. And so as a goal that we have as city council for Gary Suter to kind of come up with some sustainable funding source other than sales tax, that goal is, I think, where the problem is, why we keep going around and circling around and circling around and people thinking we're trying to do a money grab, that's not what we're trying to do. That's the farthest thing we're trying to do. We're trying to come up with a sustainable funding source, okay? You need to take it off a goal and, and let it die for a couple of years and see what happens.
You'll be on council.
And I will be on city council then for a couple more years, but I'm telling you, since I've been on council, you guys have been doing it, he's done a fantastic job continually to bring us stuff, and we, we went through all of this and it's, it seems to be a waste of time. And I think we need to get rid of this as a goal because I'm pretty much done with it.
I just want to throw it out there, it, it hasn't been a waste of time. We have made several changes, including.
That's true.
Increasing user fees, looking at sewer fees, we passed a fire tax, I mean, we've, we've actually done quite a lot. I appreciate your point that maybe it's time for it to come off for a while. I, I don't know, but I, I don't think it's fair to say that nothing's ever happened with.
And I don't, I apologize, that you're absolutely right. There's a lot of good coming out of it, especially the group that Sarah has worked with and trying to get this, I think we can come up with something. I think House and Hill still needs to have some kind of, for, funding source eventually, but right now, I won't support this at all.
And we've got all of our staff presentations primed for two years from now when it comes back, so.
Dude, stop, enough, enough.
Other discussion?
That's, I agree with you.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll jump in. I'm disappointed and not surprised that I can count to six noes already here, but I'm also disappointed that, you know, I got out of the last meeting thinking, you know, we were kind of in alignment, at least the majority, that we really needed to kind of put our money where our mouth is, as you're talking about, because we've identified these needs. We went from five to two and, you know, here we are. Now, Jason's suggestion that, you know, people needed to come out and hear this and talk to us at second reading, I was enthusiastic, I was going to go out and talk to all the open space advocates and all the groups who are involved in those kinds of sort of natural resource pursuits, get them really excited about this because I thought maybe we could rebuild the open space program that we just don't have, and maybe we could link some wildlife corridors and do some things that the people who are generally not represented here want to do. And I just didn't have the opportunity, I didn't have the time, I couldn't get in front of groups and I didn't reach out. So I think, you know, the, the fact that we don't have a lot of people here today advocating for this is, you know, I personally haven't done outreach to a lot of those groups, haven't had a chance. And frankly, a lot of people don't pay attention to the work that we do. I mean, it's unfortunate because we have well documented history of, yes, cutting things as the gentleman on TV said we didn't, and, you know, talking about taxes and so on. People just are not paying enough attention to this. So, you know, I struggle with voting no on it, obviously it'd be a six-one if I didn't. But I mean, I think the issue is also, when you look at this committee, it's great, it's fully developed rec, 100%. Like, does, do we not have river protection or care? Do we not have open space advocates in this town? I mean, maybe we don't. But I'll tell you, if this committee moves forward, I'm going to be advocating for having those voices represented because somebody needs to take care of the, the things that don't take care of themselves. So I think I know where this is going and I'm not sure what my vote will be.
I was going to vote yes.
Yeah. Yeah, for me, I'll, I'll jump in, yeah, it's, it's pretty telling when the, the groups and people who might benefit the most from this aren't even showing up to support it. And the ones that are, are saying, don't do it right now. So that pretty much tells me that we've missed the mark. And, and whether that's we've missed the mark because of timing, whether it's we've missed the mark because of lack of clarity of what, you know, what this would provide, whether it's obviously the, the harder, harder, even harder issues of, you know, cost of living and housing and how this could affect that, I think there are a lot of factors converging and the fact that some, some businesses and people had a tough year over the past year or so. So I think we have a lot of factors converging here. So yeah, I'm, I'm not going to support it either, but I, I do think for, for me, you know, the real goal when we started talking about this was not more money, it was more about diversification and it was more about putting the city in a position where, when we have those inevitable recessions and downturns in the future, we're able to withstand those much better than we can right now. Because if you look at the county, the school, other, you know, quasi-governmental entities around here that have more of a property tax focus, they don't have to take the drastic cuts that the city does when we're focused on, when our revenues are focused more on sales tax, which is much more volatile in, in general. So I'm disappointed, this is where we've landed. I'm not sure, you know, I think there are a lot of reasons, as I said, why this is, is not going to work right now, but I do think in the future, diversifying the city's revenues is still an important thing to do because I think when we have those inevitable downfalls and, and recessionary times, we're, we're going to have to make more cuts as we, we always do that are more, much more deep than some of the other entities have to do. So, yeah, so with that said, I'll, I'll not be supporting this.
One more, sorry that you're going to call for a motion. I want to make one more comment. I, it's kind of, maybe it's ironic, I think Heather was the first to say it should be for Parks and Rec, then I said it, and then you were the first to vote against it and I was the second to vote against it. So I, I appreciate that that did happen, but I, I am not sure that I will be here next year, but I would really empower you guys to think about looking at transportation again.
Men.
At transportation and not Parks and Rec. I, when I sit there and think about some innovative transportation ideas out there that we will need funding for, they meet the goals of affordable housing, they meet the goals of environmental sustainability, I mean, they, they help with our roads because there's not as many cars on them. I just, I would really ask you guys to think, is Parks and Rec the one, one to do even after?
Oh, I don't think I ever said I supported this.
No, I think you said, if, if you're going to do a tax, it should be for Parks and Rec.
Well, I said that would probably be the only way it would pass.
Right. I'm, but I think you and I are the ones that convinced it, right? I am now saying I take that back and I think it really needs to be concentrated on transportation.
Well, and I will definitely say, I agree with you, Jason, on, on the fact that something does need to kind of balance out for recessionary times, but I think our public really wants to see something that is offset, and I think my support behind a property tax would really be there if it would get away, we would go away with the grocery tax or some sort of offsetting situation. I, I think realistically speaking, you know, the, the haves and the have-nots and as much of income are only going to get, is only going to spread even further as, as the years continue, and I do not want to see property taxes continue to, to broach that gap, to make it even more. So I would like to see if we do this again to make sure that we have some sort of offsetting option.
Okay. All right, any other comments or can I get a motion on the floor?
Motion to table.
About deny?
Right, motion to deny. Second.
Second.
All right, so motion by Crossen and a second by Sloop to deny Agenda Item 18. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the question. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, what? That's a seven to zero.
Very cool. There's only one person signed up for this Saturday's farmer's market, FYI.
So, well, sorry, before we start rolling on, I, I do want to get some feedback from council on this idea of this working group. I guess, you know, I, I look at where we are on council changing potentially in the next few months, and I wonder if it's a little early to put together another working group when we don't even know what.
We're working.
Council's going to look like in November and what their goals might be.
I agree, I agree. So I think these are things that can be discussed at retreat and what level we want to tackle them, because I think realistically, as much as it is, there's some validity, I think I was on the last working group when it was a Parks and Rec district, and that obviously didn't go anywhere. I think this needs to be a ground-level deal, and then kind of incorporating council at a longer, later date and not reeling us in right out of the gate.
I sincerely hope you will identify seats and look for people with the core competencies to pick seats rather than just, you know, whoever happens to step up.
I agree.
And yeah, if this issue, if this structure rises to the top.
I don't know if Parks and Rec is the right spot, like you said, Lisa.
Maybe, okay. Any other discussion on that, working group? Okay, all right, thanks, everyone. And then Dan Foot, City Attorney's Update and Report, anything?
I do not have one tonight.
Okay, and we have minutes to approve from May 18th and June 1st.
We have to approve both of those minutes. Second.
Motion by Macy, second by Meyer, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, and a motion to adjourn, please?
To adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Sloop, second by Meyer, all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, city council.
Six to one.